To call this meeting to order. The invocation will be given by David Haley, Associate Pastor at Wrightsville United Methodist Church.
Let us pray. Poor God, we thank you for the grace of a beautiful day today.
We thank you for the blessing of living and working in a beautiful corner of your creation. We're especially grateful today for the freedoms that we enjoy in this great nation. We thank you for the freedoms that our citizens have to come and express opinions and help our elected officials to look at matters from many perspectives and points of view. And then we pray for your guidance and your wisdom for our commissioners as they undertake to make decisions. And we pray that their decisions will be for the overall good of the community as a whole. And as always, we pray that you'll help us to look with compassion upon those less fortunate, the disadvantaged in our community, some of whom live on the margins. And help us all to strive to be good citizens. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a move to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number seven is consideration of the Corning STEM partnerships sponsorship of Cape Fear Museum and Science Matters Gallery. Thank you, ma'am. We have the museum director here to talk to us.
Thank you very much, yes. I'm Kate Bailey, and I'm the museum director at Cape Fear Museum. And next to me is Tiffany Lindstrom, who is the Senior Product Engineer at Corning. And I'm very happy to let you know that it's privileged to be here to announce our third major donor for the new Cape Fear Museum as part of Project Grace. So at the core of Project Grace is a commitment to community collaboration. And it's not just about physical infrastructure, but also about fostering community ties through educational programming and cultural enrichment. The Cape Fear Museum Associates, our nonprofit arm, is actively engaging local partners to invest in the project, enhancing its reach and impact. And as you know, we then launched our fundraising campaign through the associates board, and it's called Invest in Grace, in an effort to raise a million dollars. To date, we have secured $560,000, with other sponsorships coming in from Encino and Novant Health. This initiative includes naming rights, sponsorship opportunities with different amenities, exhibits, galleries, and classrooms within the new museum exhibit, new museum location. We are thrilled to announce Corning as a sponsorship partner for our hands-on exhibition, Science Matters, in the amount of $200,000. This partnership goes beyond a mere financial transaction. It is a strategic alliance that integrates government, business, and business efforts to serve our community. Corning's commitment to Cape Fear Museum at Grace is a testament to their dedication to making a meaningful impact in the place that we all call home. And this is Tiffany, as I said. Today, we seek your support for a resolution to approve this fundraising step, sponsorship of Science Matters Exhibition for the first 10 years of the museum. And this is critical to solidifying this partnership and ensuring the success of Project Grace. And Tiffany collaborated with the museum team to develop various interactives about the properties of light and the fiber optic interactives that are within the Science Matters exhibit. And our advisory board and associate board members, Susan Barbie and Katie Glow, who are also Corning employees, were unable to join us today, but were also highly instrumental in securing this funding. We thank the Corning team for their continued partnership and engagement across many levels.
We're just grateful to be part of the opportunity. STEM is a passion, a personal passion of mine. And being able to bring Corning and its innovative STEM nature to the community is our top priority. So thank you.
Thank you. That's one of the biggest exhibits, isn't it?
It is. It's about 3,000 square feet of hands-on exhibits.
Yeah. Kids will like that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the Corning STEM partnership sponsorship.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next. Next is a request by Samuel Potter with Equitas Law Partners, LLP, applicant on behalf of Golden Ventures LLC to rezone approximately 5.1 acres in R-15 residential located at 7715 Market Street and 7718, 7740 Alexander Road to CZDB2 Regional Business and CZDR5 Residential, moderate high-density, for a convenient store with fuel stations, fast food restaurant, and drive-thru with row-style dwellings. This is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff, then the applicant and any opponents. We each be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation and an additional five minutes for rebuttal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 5.18 acres from R-15 residential district to a conditional B2 regional business district for a convenient store with fuel stations and a fast food restaurant with drive-thru, and a conditional R5 residential moderate high-density district for a maximum 12-unit, single-family attached residential development. The site is currently zoned R-15 and is largely surrounded by R-15 zoning, with some nearby B2 and office and institutional zoning across Alexander Road. The aerial photography shows the site is currently wooded with one house on the property. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles, showing the curve in Alexander Road, some images of the interior and the Market Street frontage. Here is an example of nearby R-15 development, Clay Crossing and Ogden. And here is an example of row-style dwellings. Here is an example of a convenience store with fuel stations in the unincorporated county. This is the applicant's concept plan, which depicts the three parts of this project. First is the convenience store with the fuel stations close to the corner of Market Street and Alexander Road. The convenience store features a drive-thru along the rear of the building closest to the residential portion of this development. The plan also shows a fast food restaurant with a drive-thru, which shares an access point on Market Street with the convenience store. The residential part of the plan shows 12 row-style dwelling units, which are only accessed off Alexander Road. The concept plan also shows an emergency access point from the residential to the commercial. The residential piece of this project is essentially split in half by an R-15 zoned parcel, which is not part of this project. On the other side of this parcel, along Alexander Road, is one of two stormwater management systems for this project and a proposed pump station. Because of the design constraints of this site, there are a few conditions in regard to interconnectivity, including a bicycle and pedestrian easement and path going from the residential to the site's commercial area and the residential's open space. There is also a condition regarding a public access easement through the residential part of this project from Alexander Road for bicycles and pedestrians. The purpose of these easements is to decrease the number of vehicles driving on Alexander Road to access the commercial portion of the development, intending to promote walkability and bikeability. The concept plan shows the stormwater management systems, one of which is in both the residential and commercial. There is a recommended condition to address the maintenance of this. Lastly, to address Commissioner Zappel's question about the recommended condition regarding tree retention, the areas highlighted here in green include the transitional buffers required by the UDO, but also the trees along the road. Row-style housing does not require street yard like commercial development does, but this condition is intended to capture those trees on the site. This site has several access points for the different areas of the project, including a right-in, right-out along Market Street, a full access for the commercial along Alexander Road, full access for the residential along Alexander Road, and the emergency access from the residential to the commercial. Alexander Road can be accessed by left turns on northbound Market Street, noted here and here. The northern entrance has a signalized right turn out onto southbound Market Street. There was a TIA conducted for this development. The main improvement required from this TIA was the installation of a right turn and deceleration lane on Market Street for the commercial portion of the development. There are several nearby residential and commercial projects. The TIA for this project breaks down the trips generated by the different uses. Overall, this project would generate approximately 155 a.m. and 124 p.m. peak hour trips, more than would be generated under current zoning. As mentioned earlier, the TIA required the installation of a right turn and deceleration lane on Market Street. One important thing to note is that a large number of the trips generated by the convenience store and fast food restaurants are pass-by traffic, that is, cars that were already on Market Street and stopped by for services. This development would generate approximately the same amount of students that would be expected under current zoning conditions. The site is located at the corner of Market Street and Alexander Road. The Market Street corridor is currently undergoing an NC DOT widening project to alleviate traffic congestion in this area. Much of this project will serve pass-by traffic on Market Street. While there is some residential development in the surrounding area, including the Amberly project, the Market Street corridor functions primarily as a commercial roadway, transitioning to residential uses further from the corridor. The area directly surrounding the site is generally low-density residential, including some mobile homes and single-family homes along Alexander Road. There are some, there are two duplexes adjacent to this property. The residential parcel between the R5 part of the development constrains the site design. The recommended conditions are intended to mitigate some of the issues that the constrained site presents. This project would support the county's strategic plan for business growth and increasing the housing supply. The 2016 comprehensive plan classifies this area as community mixed-use and general residential. This project is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan's recommendations for properties that are located in these place types. The planning board considered this item at their August 7, 2025, meeting. The board, applicant, and staff worked on the wording of a few of the conditions during the meeting, agreeing to the conditions which are reflected in the staff report and on the next two slides. The planning board voted six to zero to recommend approval of the request, finding it consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the types and intensity of uses, as well as the residential density, are compatible with its place type designation. The board also found recommending approval of the rezoning request reasonable and in the public interest because the site plan provides a transition from the roadway corridor to the nearby housing. Staff's recommendation is based on the policy guidance of the 2016 comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. The board recommended the following eight conditions encompassing access easements, stormwater maintenance, outdoor speakers, and tree retention. As a result, staff concurs with the planning board's recommendation. Staff have received additional public comments, which were provided to the board earlier today. Lastly, I'll add that if approved, development would be subject to TRC and zoning compliance review in order to ensure full compliance with all ordinance requirements. This concludes staff's presentation. Mr. Tim Low is here with county engineering, and Ms. Kaitlin Serza is here with the WMPO to answer any questions that come up under those topics. The applicant is here and has also prepared a presentation.
Thank you, sir. Is that you? Next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name's Cory Lee. I'm here on behalf of Sam Potter. I work with him at Equitas Law Partners. We represent Golden Ventures One, the property owner for this rezoning. We appreciate the planning board's unanimous recommendation of approval, as well as staff's thorough report and recommendation of approval. So I'm hoping that my presentation this afternoon will be supplementary and help to provide additional information to help you in making your decision. As staff noted, this is a commercial corridor, and I know you all know Market Street, but I thought that putting some color around what it means for this particular site to be a commercial corridor would be helpful. So looking at the site plan that's up on your screen now, to the north is Porter's Neck and south is Ogden. And I've identified some of the landmarks that might help orient you. So you can see there's a Green Assets to the south, a Cube Smart, which is a self-storage facility, Commercial Cycle and Marine, a veterinary hospital, and then jumping Market Street, there's Amberly Shore's Apartments, Balcom Auto, a U-Haul, and then a Shell gas station, catty corner to our site. So you can visualize exactly what those sites look like. These are some photos that I took recently of those areas on Market Street. So again, I know you all know that Market Street is commercial, but in terms of providing a visual, I thought this would be helpful. Here is our site plan. As staff noted, because this is split in the future land use map in terms of being a community mixed-use and general residential future land use type, we thought that it was appropriate to nestle the general residential portion of our site along Alexander Road, where there is already adjacent residential uses. And then towards the front portion of the site is where we have our convenience store with 12 fuel stations, and then our quick service restaurant. Something that all of you hear often is that traffic is a big concern. And Mr. Dickerson noted, and we appreciate him bringing up, that a lot of the traffic attributable to this development would be pass-by traffic. We talked to our traffic engineer, and in fact, 75% of the traffic that was reflected on our approved TIA, which has been updated as recently as June, is attributable to, or 75% of it is attributable to passersby. So they're just like us, they're driving to work, and the place that anyone's going to stop is a place that's convenient along their trip. So that is 75%. So if you have 100 trips, 75, or 75 of those, yes, will be pass-by traffic. Of note, our traffic impact analysis reflected up to 10,000 square feet for our convenience store. We're around 6,100 right now on this site plan. And the quick service restaurant was up to 3,500 square feet, and we're about 2,000. In terms of traffic, again, to show why this would be a helpful development in the Market Street corridor, Market Street was just widened and a median has been added. And so in terms of trying to access meaningful infrastructure for passing motorists, trying to find a gas station coming southbound towards Ogden, the closest gas station is 8.7 or 15 minutes away. So 8.7 miles, 15 minutes, which is all the way in Pender County. The closest gas station to the south is about .2 miles, so they have some more options southbound. But then going northbound from this site, you have about 2.7 miles to the closest gas station going northbound. So this meets a need, especially for southbound traveling motorists. Looking at the arrows on your screen, it's going to be mostly served by those that are traveling southbound towards Ogden. Commissioners Apple, you brought up a point that Mr. Dickerson noted, which was the trees on the site. And I thought that it would be helpful to show you here our tree survey, overlaid with our site plan. And Mr. Dickerson did a great job of identifying the trees that we intend to retain as part of the proposed conditions. And I'm hoping that this is helpful as well, so you can see what would be removed. But our goal is ensuring that as many of those existing and mature trees can be retained as possible. This is a rendering for the proposed Sheets, which is the convenience store and fuel station that is proposed on this site. Here are just a couple of renderings. We have a handful of renderings moving forward as well. Sheets has a presentation for you as well. And here is the gas station that was recently installed at the intersection of Shipyard and Independent. So this is a Sheetz that was recently put in. We do not currently have a builder for the residential portion along the back, which will be, we propose 12 row-style townhouses. But this is roughly what we expect that product to look like. So we thought that would be a helpful visual for all of you as well. As staff noted and as the planning board recommended, this is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan in a variety of ways, most importantly, that it meets the future land use map's goals and we think provides an important service for traveling motorists. We've said that Planning Board unanimously recommended it, and that's important. But even more so, for those of you who may not have had the opportunity to review that planning board meeting, I wanted to provide some of the comments that the planning board made when they recommended approval. One was from Mr. Hip, saying that Market Street has become a commercial corridor, and he appreciated that this was an example of good commercial development. Ms. Roanhouse stated it was important to her that the traffic was mostly pass-by and that we were preserving the residential character of the back portion of the property. And the chairman also indicated that this was a true mixture of uses, not just mixed uses, where they were a cohesive project. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them, but I don't want to steal Sheets' thunder in presenting their, their rendering. So they do have a presentation for you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Sean Poole from Burlington, North Carolina, 405 Fort Lauderdale Lane. Thank you for having us today. Sheets team-wise, so we have Brian Downs, Megan Reese, myself, and then Patrick, who all represent Sheets, have done a lot of the projects here in the market. And just wanted to talk a little bit about who we are. So what is a Sheetz? So we're the ultimate one-stop shop. We focus on not just gas, convenience, technology advancement, and then the food industry. So whether it's food and beverage, a way that consumers can use us for a multitude of things. Sheetz and why that matters, so our family tree, so Sheetz is a, their last name. So what's on our canopy is family-rooted. We're on our third generation. If you started with Bob Sheets in 1952, and we're currently being ran by Travis Sheets as the president and CEO of the company. This slide just kind of speaks to our current footprint, not just across the northeast, but within North Carolina. So we currently have, we just actually celebrated our 800th store in Raleigh, North Carolina. So we officially have 800 stores open, with about 130 located in North Carolina. You can see on the bottom right-hand side in Wilmington, we have two in New Hanover County, but three opened in the market. This is just a slide of our renderings of, you know, what we plan to offer here. So if you've been to one of our stores, it's prototypical. We're looking at six, what we call them dives, pumps, 12 fueling locations, drive-through, and a kind of a brick outside finished. Here's our elevations of the site that we plan to propose here. You can see all, all four sides are of brick, masonry, and then the six dives, six pumps. What makes Sheetz great, we are very active in the community. So we've been ranked as Fortune's Best Places to Work for women, for families, top places that care. We are also very engaged in the community. Tammy Whitehurst, who's our local district manager, lives in the market, has participated in a lot of the events that are important to Wilmington. But we also have Sheets for the kids. So every store that we open and operate, the family supports 16 children per location. And we use the Salvation Army to, through an application process, where we're giving back into where we're operating. We're also engaged with Make-A-Wish, Feeding America. So any food that we're making sure that before it ever gets spoiled, that we're kind of giving that back into the community. And then Special Olympics, which has been our longest-standing partnership. With every grand opening, we donate 2,500 to Feeding America and Special Olympics. That was a little bit about us. Happy to answer any questions about the organization. I've been with them for 20 years. So look forward to anything that you have, and appreciate you having us all here today.
Thank you, sir. Your competitors come to town also, and I tell you, it's really nice for folks like y'all to come to town, and you ain't got your hand out, your hand in out. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Sure. Okay. So we have one extra speaker, I believe Ms. English.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Commissioners Zappel, Walker, and Scalise. I appreciate the time. I'm Natalie English, President and CEO of the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here to encourage you to be creative, right? As you're continuing to consider how our county has developed, it's no secret that we don't have enough housing in our community at whatever level you're talking about. I hear from chamber members consistently that they're concerned about where their current and former, or future, employees are going to live. And so I'm excited about the creativity the developer used in this project, which adds 12 units. And there was a conversation at a last meeting, at a recent meeting on this project, 12. You know, we're not even touching the 10,000. I'm here to say we need every 12 we can find in the right ways, in the right places, across our entire county. And so I would urge you to also think creatively and to support what this developer's put together. As you said, Mr. Chairman, this is a company that gives back, and they've done so. They've invested in your Chamber of Commerce. They, as they said, they give back. Their customers are happy. Their employees are happy. Those are the kinds of employers we want in our community, and we need 12 more units on that piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There's no opposition to this plan. So unless the applicant has anything else they'd like to say, I'm going to close the public hearing. Have you got something?
Just want to make ourselves available for any questions the Commissioners have. So if you have any questions, we're glad to answer them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
In case, I'm going to close the public hearing right now. And it's time, if there's any board discussion, Commissioners Apple.
I have something, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Zach. Going through the packet and listening to this presentation tonight, it sounds like by right, 13 houses could be built on this piece of property. And what this does, in effect, is slightly reduce that number, allowing for 12, but also allowing for the commercial application to be added in addition to what might otherwise be available by right. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
As a matter of discussion, I would just say that if we're tracking with what might otherwise be allowed on the property, adding a commercial application that will create jobs and economic opportunity for the community, I am inclined to favor this project. And happy to facilitate further conversations with the Commissioners, but I wanted to get my thoughts and question out there. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Zach, I, you know, Cory, you may be dragged, you're not a couple of questions. How, what's the proposal for going north on Market Street when you leave the facility?
So you would have to come out of this and then make a U-turn at the next, I don't know the exact distance to the next U-turn, but that is how one would then travel northbound on Market Street?
So if you pull in, get some gas, you pull out, you've got to go south on Market Street to somewhere where you would have to take a U-turn?
Yes, sir.
Or I, I guess by looking at it, it's just, it's just not made clear on your transportation situation here, your diagram. I guess you could go around Alexander Road and go up to where it comes in north there? And that is a full stoplight that's there?
Yes, sir. That has a controlled right arrow. And there's, for folks traveling northbound on Market Street, there's a controlled left over at that intersection. So there is some stop control there. But they have both intersections of Alexander and Market to turn right on and head southbound.
I, I think you're saying the right thing. It's a full stoplight is what I'm asking for, there at the corner of Alexander and Market, right?
So at the northern, at the northern of the two, it's not a full four-way stoplight. It's a controlled, if you're traveling north on Market Street and want to turn left across Market onto Alexander, there's a controlled left arrow over, but that's the only direction.
What if you're coming out of Alexander and you want to go north on Market? Would you have the ability with that stoplight to be able to come out and take a left on Market?
No, sir. It's a right turn only.
So the only way to get north on this is to leave the facility and drive south somewhere and find a U-turn and turn around and then go north?
That's correct.
That's pretty much how Market Street is now. Everywhere you go, you got to go get a U-turn.
Oh, I get it. You know, Cory, can you add some, you know, detail to this? I just can't believe that in the transportation plan, this wasn't addressed. I, I just can't believe that in the transportation plan, this wasn't addressed.
Yes, sir. The right-in, right-out, as the chairman noted, is how the, the corridor exists. And our indication from our traffic engineer is that the, the traffic that's going to be coming to the site is predominantly going to be going southbound once they exit. So the right-in, right-out is facilitating rather than hindering that traffic flow.
Okay, so you don't know where they would turn around either?
It's only, it, it's a couple hundred feet to the south. They also, they, being any traveling motorist, could go, um, along Alexander Road. So there is a right turn or left turn out of the site, uh, if I could, can I draw right around here?
Yeah.
And they could go along Alexander Road to another signalized U-turn up towards where the Amberly Apartments are.
Right, to the north?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I was just asking Zach about. At that stoplight, he was just saying you can't take a left-hand turn there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. Uh, the, um, uh, you know, the trees, the open space, how much, what's the percentage of open space on this property? You showed us a nice slide in the beginning.
They, they have to have a minimum of 20%.
That's what I thought.
Um, so it would be that or exceeding that. I don't know the exact percentage off the top of my head.
You, you have the slide that you brought up first, I think Cory, was during your, uh, presentation that showed the, uh, trees that, uh, around the perimeter? Cause I thought it was 20%, and maybe I'm wrong, but looking at that slide that showed the green around there, it doesn't look like it's 20%, but maybe I've got that wrong. That was the one before this. Eric, you there?
So this is our tree survey?
Yeah. Uh, there was a slide that came up at the very beginning of it that showed...
Right here.
Yeah, okay. No, but, uh, Zach, maybe it was part of your presentation then? Yeah, the very beginning?
So I had a, a slide in mind that depicted the areas of the, that were, that the condition about tree retention was intended to address.
Yes.
I'm not sure if that's answering your question.
So it wasn't an exact, uh, it was just a representation is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. It was the, the closest that I could draw on PowerPoint.
Keep going. Yeah, this one. So is that an accurate representation of the, or that's just a, a concept?
So this is not intended to depict open space. This is intended to depict the trees that are covered in condition number one.
So, yeah, Zach, uh, your department satisfied we've got 20% open space?
Yes, sir. This site plan is compliant with the UDO.
Great. Thank you. And, uh, you noted the, uh, I guess it's an underground stormwater facility that's there that has, do you, tell me more about that?
Yes, sir. Um, our, our, um, engineer, I believe, is coming in right now, actually, to speak about this topic. Um, our stormwater was engineered intentionally considering the impacts to surrounding properties. It is underground, and I'm sure all of you are familiar with the improvements that DOT has done in that corridor, the very expensive improvements that DOT has done to try to improve all of the, uh, stormwater flow. And so it's going to go under the road, and then it would, uh, be discharged on the other side of the property. So our engineer, who, like I said, he's in route, I believe, could speak to that. To the extent I have more information that could directly answer a question, I'm glad to.
Is it counting on, uh, pervious cement, you know, for the operation, or is it a direct feed? Or do you know?
I'm not sure of that question.
Looks like...
And here's our engineer. This is Nick Loretta.
Oh, yeah. Hey, Nick.
Hello.
Good to see you. Yeah.
See y'all.
Yeah. Catch your breath, Nick. Nick, I just had a quick question about the underground, I guess, storage facility for stormwater. Is it a direct feed, or is it, you know, counting on pervious concrete, uh, to kind of flow into it? How does it work?
It'll be a direct feed, or a direct feed with underground pipe storage. So there'll be a divergent structure upstream that will divert the flow to the underground detention and then to the storm filter for the water quality treatment.
Great. And then eventually flow underneath Market Street, uh, to carry on. Nick, here, let me just jump to it. This area, uh, during Hurricane Florence, had a tremendous amount of, uh, sheet flooding, uh, across this area here. I just want to make sure that you address that and the capacity of your stormwater retention addresses that issue.
Sure, and I completely understand that. Obviously, the, the culvert under, uh, Market Street has been upsized to an eight, uh, eight-foot
Yes.
RCP as well. Um, yes, I've done significant modeling to take into account the entire drainage area that comes through that site. So there's like a, there's an existing five-foot pipe that runs under Alexander and comes through the site. I've modeled that as full build-out, our site with full build-out, you know, our site meeting the retention requirements for the two, 10, and 25-year storm, and as well as conveyance of off-site flow through our site and underneath into that culvert.
Great. Now you answered the question, Nick. Thanks. I'm sorry to make you run back here.
Yeah, no, not a problem.
That's good. Um, also, uh, Zach, uh, could you, you had a, a slide at the very beginning of your presentation about the different, uh, the representations of row, house, or row-style, uh, you know, housing or dwelling units. Could you bring that slide up? Yeah, there. Please tell me, Cory, that this is not what's being planned for the 12 units?
I would say the photos that we showed in my presentation would more directly align with what we anticipate.
You're on record now.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Okay, cause this looks an awful lot like, um, you know, military-style barracks as opposed to roundhouse.
Or affordable housing.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I guess so, but I think you can do better with architectural detail, which you showed us as part of it. Just wanted to make sure. Great, thanks. That's all I've got. Mr. Chair?
Anybody else got anything?
I just have one question.
Okay.
It just, um, it showed on one of the maps about the dumpsters, and I think we had gotten a, a comment from the neighbors that were worried or concerned. Do you feel like y'all have addressed that as far as the buffer? I mean, I think my suspicion was the noise part where the speakers aren't, I'm, I'm just concerned with the people that live there now that y'all filter around with or not, if it's gonna cause them problems in the future.
Yes, ma'am. We have, uh, landscape buffer requirements because there is adjacent residential, and our hope and our belief is that maintaining that buffer of mature trees will assist in ensuring that those residential developments that already exist will not be impacted and will not feel any significant change, given where that dumpster location is. I did see the comment that you, that you're referring to. So, um, that's our...
Okay, yeah. I think you showed a map of it, and it's more over to the right. So I, I guess I, without the visual, but I, I couldn't see that. Um, it was, it was a, yeah.
It's in like a hook area.
Yeah. Yeah, that looks out of the way. Y'all are satisfied with the stormwater, that it's gonna be okay?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we, we trust Nick's modeling, and he has done, as he mentioned, significant modeling, because we understand, especially in New Hanover County and Wilmington, ensuring that, that storms are not a concern with development.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And Bill?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. Um, and, and to Commissioners Apple, your point, a lot of the properties on, uh, Market Street do have that same kind of issue with having to turn around, but most of those people may be going into Wilmington and not going back north. But, uh, for me, I like the idea that it's providing services for the community and also, um, jobs in the area, um, that where it's located in by a stable company with a great background. So for me, the job creation is a big issue, and I'm inclined to support.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, you gonna need to come back up.
Ma'am?
Before we proceed with the vote, I'd like to back, invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
We would like to proceed with the vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the proposed rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because of the types and intensities of uses, as well as the residential density are compatible with the, with its place-type designation. I also find the rezoning, I also find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the site plan provides a transition from the roadway corridor to the nearby housing. I make reference to the proposed conditions.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? Thank you. Okay. Number nine is a cr- request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions, applicant on behalf of Giovanni Affalito and Tanya Viankenzi. I know I butchered that. Property owners to rezone approximately 4.56 acres in R-15 residential located at 6634 Carolina Beach Road to CZD R-5 residential moderate high-density for a maximum 36-unit attached single-family residential development. This is a public hearing. We have a presentation from staff and the applicant, and any opponents will be allowed a total of 15 minutes for their presentation and an additional five minutes for rebuttal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. As you just heard, this is a request to rezone from an R-15 district to a conditional R-5 residential moderate high-density district for a 36 attached single-family dwelling. This project may look familiar to the board. This property has been the subject of three previous rezoning requests, the higher-density multifamily projects. From the aerial photography, we can see the property is wooded and bordered on the west by the Lord's Creek neighborhood. This is an aerial photo of the site, images of the property from different angles. Here are examples of single-family residential development. And here an example of attached single-family homes. Site is accessed on Carolina Beach Road through a new proposed turn lane onto a circular drive with a condition for a public access easement along the road frontage. There are 36 homes around the road in the form of nine quadruplexes. However, a condition has been included to allow other attached housing types like triplexes to allow some design flexibility if approved. The applicant has also included a condition capping the building height at 35 feet, which is five feet below the maximum height allowed in both the R-5 and R-15 zoning districts. The applicant has included a tree save area in the center of the site, and a fenced type A opaque buffer that preserves existing trees along the property line. Conditions have been included guaranteeing the tree preservation and fencing. Stormwater ponds in the southern portion of the site, adjacent to an area of delineated wetlands that the project is not anticipated to impact. There are a few projects in the area that are under review or construction, and while the projects with TIAs did not account for this project specifically, they were designed to account for some general traffic growth in the area. As we saw in the concept plan, site has right-in, right-out access on Carolina Beach Road that's currently over capacity. The access is just north of the Lord's Creek Community entrance with a proposed improvement to extend the right turn lane into the neighborhood. The nearest U-turn for northbound traffic is approximately 1,800 feet south of the site. While the applicant has provided an easement for future bicycle and pedestrian access, there are currently not any alternative transportation options in the area, and currently no state transportation improvement projects planned to address existing traffic conditions. Project is below the 100-trip threshold that triggers a TIA, but DOT will review the project through the driveway permitting process, and a condition has been included guaranteeing the right turn lane improvement provided as approved by DOT. As I mentioned earlier, this parcel has been the subject of three prior rezoning requests for multifamily development. The first request was for a density of 17 dwelling units per acre and two requests for 14 dwelling units per acre. Public comments at those hearings expressed concern about the building height, traffic impacts, density, and housing type. Carolina Beach Road corridor has historically been developed as lower-density detached single-family homes. However, with the expansion of public water and sewer and the size of the site, it is not anticipated to be developed for single-family detached homes. The application includes attached single-family housing with several conditions intended to reduce potential impacts on adjacent parcels by reducing the building height, preserving existing trees and natural areas, and lighting restrictions. Project would meet two objectives of the strategic plan, related to additional housing and preserving natural features. Comprehensive plan designates this property as community mixed-use, which focuses on small-scale, compact, mixed-use development patterns that serve all modes of traffic and act as an attractor for county residents and visitors. Planning board considered this item at their August 7th meeting. Two people spoke in opposition to the request citing concerns about traffic and drainage. One person spoke in general support but expressed similar concerns to the opposition. Planning board recommended approval of the request, finding the project consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the proposed housing type intensity is within the range recommended by the community mixed-use place type. Board also found approval of the request to be reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed conditions could mitigate potential impacts on neighboring development. Staff's recommendation is based on the policy guidance of the 2016 comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. As a result, staff concurs with the planning board's recommendation of approval, which includes the following conditions related to restrictions on housing types, parking, building height, permitting for the right turn lane, tree protection and preservation, lighting restrictions, and the public access easement along Carolina Beach Road. Staff has received several additional comments related to this request, which were forwarded to the board earlier today. Should the rezoning be approved, development in the site would be subject to additional staff review to ensure all land use regulations are met. This concludes my presentation. Tim Low with County Engineering and Caitlin Serso with the WMPO are here, and the applicant has prepared a presentation and can answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. The applicants. Ms. Wolf?
Good evening, Board. My name's Cindy Wolf, and I'm here on behalf of the owners of this property. As Robert mentioned, at least four of you are certainly familiar with this track along the busy Carolina Beach corridor. The previous proposals have tracked through past processes. We've gone, and my client has been adamant that this is a good developable site for this area of the community. We've acknowledged past community comments with a different residential product at this layout, there are layout changes, there are proposed conditions. The community we ask for you to approve this evening is one we strongly believe meets multiple strategies of that comprehensive land use plan. It does mitigate peripheral impacts, and it is consistent and justified for approval of an R-5 conditional district. The land use plan has been the guiding document for fostering economic development and sustainable stewardship in our county. The policies for growth and development encourage safe and affordable housing to every citizen. But the need for diversity of housing type is important. Housing preferences are not solely the single-family lot template that has dominated the suburbs in the past. The community mixed-use place type promotes higher-density development for a reason. Properties along the busier road corridors are no longer attractive nor even appropriate for lower-density single-family development. Rezoning this property for town home community would be totally consistent with the concept of transitioning density and infilling vacant parcels where urban services are available. Past proposals were for multifamily districts and rental homes at much higher densities. As Robert pointed out, past projects went from requesting 78 units to 72 units to 64 units. This plan is a total of only 36 single-family attached homes. That's a density of just eight units per acre, half the number of units of past proposals. The homes will be built and recorded for individual ownership. They're not a rental product. The units are in nine four-unit structures. The condition that Robert referred to meant that they couldn't be five-unit or six-unit attached, but they could, if we reduce density for whatever reason, still be ones, twos, or threes, in addition to the fours that are on this plan. Town homes provide a versatile housing option with common area maintenance. A mix of housing types in an area helps create a broader range of residence to support a vibrant community. Additional trip generation, as compared with the current permitted density, is minimal. This project is proposed with specific conditions of approval. Condition number four covers the driveway permit required by DOT. There is already a taper in turn lane that goes into Glen Arthur Drive. Preliminary review comments from DOT have recommended extension of that existing right turn lane and then the taper further to the north that would also then provide safe turning movements into this neighborhood. Turn lanes for access to multiple driveways or streets is not an unusual wet, um, situation. Turn lanes for access to multiple driveways or streets is not an unusual situation along major thoroughfares. Condition number five is that the perimeter setback prescribed by the ordinance for performance developments is 20 feet, but because the buildings have multiple units, we are required to have a transitional buffer. Instead of putting a fence along that boundary line, which generally includes more clearing, we have committed that we would place the solid screening fence along, instead of along the property line, along the 15-foot buffer distance. That allows all the trees within that 15 foot to be preserved along with existing vegetation. The field survey of the existing vegetation identified most of the older trees in the central area of this parcel. This layout took that into consideration with the intent of preserving it as a natural area for both the project aesthetics and the enjoyment of all of the residents. We'll be working with a certified arborist and the Alliance from Cape Fear Trees, whom I believe has provided a note to you of their support, to inventory and maximize existing vegetation in this area, both for those aesthetics of the community and for overall environmental sensitivity. In addition, the area down along the southeastern ditch bank will be maintained in a natural state. Drainage and stormwater management are very straightforward for this project. We've set aside adequate area for detention pond, and we have excellent grade across the site. The pond is obviously located at the low end of the tract. The existing stream that carries drainage from under Carolina Beach Road will continue to traverse off-site flow past the site and provides for our mandatory pond overflow. A public drainage easement will be dedicated over it. The wetlands along that stream bordering the southeast boundary of the tract have been delineated, reviewed, and approved by the Corps of Engineers. The plan provides both for the state stream setback, and there are no impacts to the wetlands being proposed. That swamp forest resource will be buffered, and we're well upstream of any of the closest 100-year floodplain limits. That being said, although we don't generally get into TRC-level detailed design and permitting before we even know a project's entitled, comments were made about some of the heavy storm flooding that occurred during the western portion of the tract. This is the topographic field survey that shows the low spot within that tract. So you've got drainage coming this way, you have some drainage coming this way, in today's current situation. Apparently, that has created some incidents down in that hole. We have engaged a civil engineer to provide a preliminary grading plan for that and drainage, not only to show how we can be confident in meeting all the regulations for stormwater management and not impacting off-site properties with runoff from new surface coverage, but also that we can satisfy condition number six for preservation of that courtyard. The red lines are what I explained to the engineer, we could not impact beyond. This plan shows that all rear roof runoff can be directed around to the front access drive. The roadway will be reverse-crowned with drop inlets along the center line. All drainage is led to the stormwater pond, which is sized for the regulated storm events. Preliminary grading lines have been calculated. Each of these slabs has finished floor elevations, and there is a mix of flat slabs where they can be, in that they're basically at grade, or stepped as necessary to follow the grade for both positive drainage and maximum protection of the areas within those red lines. In conclusion, every new home in our community is built in somebody's backyard. The new Hanover County is not stagnant. The property was zoned for low density in 1969 when zoning was adopted. Conditions change, that's why we update our future plans on a regular basis. The compelling reason for any zoning change is its consistency with both the plans and policies developed by the county as a whole. Conditional zoning districts allow for each project to be weighed on its merits and whether mitigation is provided for the potential impacts. This project is an acceptable transition along a busy highway. We've mitigated impacts, we're at 36 units, which is a residential density, it is not a multifamily density. We appreciate staff's thorough review of the petition. We certainly hope that you'll agree with both theirs and the planning commissions, planning boards, positive recommendations for approval, and I am here for your questions. Thank you.
We're gonna hold off on that until we get through with everybody. So I've got Laura McCabe, who is speaking in favor.
Honorable Commissioners, my name is Laura McCabe. Today, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Alliance for Cape Fear Trees, a local nonprofit whose mission is to protect, preserve, and plant trees. The Alliance supports the robust tree preservation strategies of this project's conceptual plan. The project proposes to preserve a natural open space and tree save area in the center of the site that we believe the residents will value as a significant amenity. The applicant has agreed to staff's proposed condition number six, which requires a certified arborist to survey the health and viability of the trees in this natural grove, and then to then install protective fencing around its perimeter before the rest of the site can be disturbed. The Alliance appreciates that the applicant has stated their intent to maximize tree save and not to clearcut the project site. We believe this commitment to preserve natural areas and quality open space should be codified as a requirement for all performance residential developments. If this project is approved and proceeds to detailed design and permitting, the Alliance hopes that additional low-impact development principles will be incorporated. Some examples might be pervious paving materials for each unit's parking pad, and bio-retention and rain gardens to manage some of the stormwater. We also hope that the landscape plan will specify only regionally-appropriate native plants and trees for the new street trees and foundation plating that will be required. The Alliance believes that the conceptual design for this neighborhood demonstrates that with intentional planning, new Hanover County can respond to our region's housing needs while still protecting the ecological systems that make our region special and livable, especially preserving existing mature, healthy trees. Thank you for taking these ideas into consideration when making your decision about this application.
Thank you, ma'am. Natalie English? Natalie, you've got four minutes and 52 seconds.
Oh, wow, I could talk about all kinds of fun things. But I want to start with I'm back, and I say that seriously and jokingly in that I told the planning commission and the planning board that they're gonna start to see a lot more of me and people who I can engage in these conversations, because as I said earlier, we need more housing units in our community, and there are places where multifamily developments belong, and there are places where they don't belong. At the same time, there are places where people might not want them, but that shouldn't be the decision-maker. It's unfortunate, but these infill properties are few and far to come by anymore in our county, and again, we are desperate to increase the supply. Increasing the supply will affect the cost of housing in our region, and so I urge you to again, support this project today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Now, we've got some folks in opposition of this plan. Adrian Gorber?
Good afternoon. My name is Adrian Gorber, and I live in New Hanover County. Thank you for listening. I noticed there's other people up to speak in opposition, so I'll try and be quick.
Well, there's four of you, so between the four of you, you've got 15 minutes.
I ask that you move to recommend denial of this proposed rezoning. It is not in keeping with our most current 2025 trend towards downzoning, and relies on a nine-year-old comprehensive plan aimed to boost development. This nine-year-old plan was noted to be deserving of a closer look at our last county commissioners' meeting less than two weeks ago. Things have changed since 2016. Development is rampant and not sustainable, at this rate, at this rate. This application relies entirely on that plan, a plan that is no longer in keeping with the current needs and concerns of our community. We are a sea of affordable housing here, it is thousands and thousands of apartments available. And with that in mind, I urge you to preserve what few undeveloped lands we have left in New Hanover County, keeping their current zones, including this lot. It should remain R-15. I am opposed to this rezoning request, and reading directly from our Unified Development Order, it states that the purpose of R-15 is for very low-to-low-density residential development with quiet residential and recreational nature of the district. This applicant is asking for permission to rezone this lot to a conditional zoning district, CZDR5, building high-density, multi-use construction. This is not in keeping with the surrounding properties, and it does not sound quiet or recreational. This lot is not near any other businesses. It is also not in keeping with our county's new downzoning approach. Lord's Creek and literally all the properties surrounding this lot are zoned R-15. This lot should contain only 2.5 homes per acre, allowing for 11 homes to be built. We've already given all R-15 zones more density by incorporating the accessory dwelling option. And if you refer to our Unified Development Ordinance, in section 3.55, this district is primarily intended for use as transitions between zoning districts and dissimilar character, creating a more orderly transition benefiting all parties and communities. This lot is surrounded entirely on all four sides by R-15. How is this a transition between zones of dissimilar character? It is not. There is nothing to transition from or to in this setting. If it were truly a transition between neighboring properties, it would look more like this. 10 detached single-family homes with no more than two stories. Building high-density townhomes will in no way benefit the affected parties or the community at large. If anything, it will be detrimental by decreasing our quality of life and safety by placing too many people in a storm-prone, flood-prone coastal community that will most likely need to evacuate quickly in the future. This higher density will require more impervious parking, more impervious road surface, more impervious slabs, and a total of 76,000 square feet of impervious surfaces. More earth-moving and changes in elevation, more retaining walls, more runoff, more tree removal. And it will increase noise and decrease privacy and quiet enjoyment of adjacent properties. A higher density here will open the door to more higher-density applications in the future, and everyone will be pushing the envelope. In 2023, we committed to environmental stewardship, and I don't feel that this is showing environmental stewardship. This is a boat that is overcrowded, and this county is starting to feel like a very crowded boat. This part of town is all R-15, R-10. We don't want these businesses here. People live here, hundreds of people live here. The plan is wrong. We should keep R-15 residential lower densities in this portion. People live on this road. This is the sample of a townhome that was provided by staff. This is an example of what the rezoning will allow. She even states in her plan, regulated trees have been located and will be, tree protection details and mitigation requirements will be completed during detailed design and permitting. Next, in other words, what you see here on her plan is not what you will get. And I note in the center area where we're preserving trees, those trees are 100 feet tall, and they appear to be within about five feet of the building. So once we reach that point, she'll have an argument to cut the trees down. I do not see a side view of anything like we did with the Sheetz presentation. There's no picture of three-story townhomes with commercial spaces on the first floor, which is what this zoning entitles this owner. I ask that you recommend denial. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Kyle, Kyle Pressma?
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I'm from across the other room there. My name's Kyle Pressma, and I'm here on behalf of my family and fellow residents of Lord's Creek. Yes. I want to be clear that we are not against development. We are asking for strategic planning. Strategic growth means putting the right homes in the right place. Nearly 1,000 households already share one entrance onto a 55 mile-per-hour highway. This plan would stack a new turn lane for 36 townhomes directly on top of it. Just this past weekend, my wife and I and my son witnessed a three-car accident right across from where this property is proposed. Due to the speed and congestion in this area, that shows what this corridor is really like during the day. The developer points to a 15-foot buffer and a fence as if that's enough. For families whose backyards, when I look straight into townhomes, that is not a buffer. Real transitional buffers are 30 to 50 feet, giving both privacy and space for stormwater absorption. More times than not, when rezonings are approved, it is because the developer has made improvements to better the neighborhood's impact. This plan fails to do so. Over 500 residents have signed a petition opposing this rezoning. That is not fatigue, that is a clear message. The 2016 Comprehensive Plan makes it clear that rezonings must support safe, strategic growth, and protect existing neighborhoods. This proposal does not do this. Strategic growth means balancing housing types, but within just a short radius of the site, hundreds of townhomes are already underway. Adding 36 more on a uniquely constrained property makes no sense. Please listen to the residents who live and work here. Please vote no on this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Penny Wilmery?
Good afternoon, and thank you for hearing me today.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Penny Wilmery. I live at 707 Bancroft Drive in Lord's Creek. Some of you met me last year, and so some of my remarks are gonna sound very familiar because we still have some of the existing problems with this current plan. I sent in with public comments some pictures, but I'll explain the area a little bit better for you in terms of those of us who drive it every day. So as you come down Carolina Beach Road on the 55 mile-per-hour speedway, because people take 55 as a suggestion, and you're headed towards Glen Arthur and to our neighborhood, you will first run into Shining Light Ministries, which is a little church, and for a little church, it does a lot of business. Chronically, on Thursdays, they have a food bank and clothes giveaway. They serve the community. They do a great job serving the community. On Thursdays, their cars are stacked up, not only in their parking lot, but to the north and south of their property. So when you're driving along and you're trying to get back into the subdivision, those cars are pulling in and out now from the church in front of those trying to get back into our neighborhoods. At this point, we often, we find, we drive down Carolina Beach Road, we start getting ready to go into the exit lane, and there are people that are driving literally right up on our tails. They can read the fine print on my license plate. And as I try to slow down, I'm also at this point watching out for the church traffic, and putting another lane in the middle of this four-and-a-half-acre property, this little piece of land, is gonna put our residents at risk. And for that reason, I urge you all to oppose this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is it Peggy Derrick? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Peggy Derrick, and I've been here from the very beginning of trying to get this opposed. Every time we come Every time we come down here, we have more and more support through our community once it gets out. These other people have said exactly the things that I would have said with petitions that have been sent in to you all. And I'm pleased to ask you to deny this rezoning.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, now the applicant has five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you very much. Although the comp plan is being updated right now, I guarantee that the properties along Carolina Beach Road will continue to be considered transitional types of properties and be recommended for higher densities. It's just a given, a long, busy road corridors. You don't put 1969, single-family residential development. We have shown by the preliminary grading that we will not have to overgrade the tract. We've gone the extra distance to do what's needed to be done to abide by the conditions that we've agreed to. And that is what I believe that first speaker failed to understand, that conditional zoning is exactly that. It is limited to a particular plan and a set of conditions. I don't know if she had the opportunity to read all those conditions, but we won't be able to break ground unless we meet those conditions if this is approved. There are close to 800 residents in the communities of Lord's Creek and Ocean Trail and Ocean Woods. They all signed a petition, sometimes multiple signatures from the same household. Petitions are, people go around, they put up a petition, "Don't you think there's too much development in our community?" Yeah, we all do. It'd be lovely if we could just shut the gate and be here. But I keep in mind that of those 800 residents, just at least half of them have just been constructed in the last five to 10 years. They are new residents also. The one thing I do totally agree with in the opposition is that the speed limit along that stretch should definitely be from where it changes there at Sanders Road all the way down to Myrtle Grove Road. We've had tons of development in that area. Yes, I think it's this board's, hopefully, you know, desire to get with DOT and reduce that speed limit from 55 to 45. I think it'd be wise. I think everyone would appreciate. We all know people will still speed. There will still be incidents. But there's nothing about the traffic for these 36 units or the means which DOT has proposed that it can be accomplished by extension of that turn lane that is any different than any other development along that road. I guess, you know, there have been other rezonings, multifamily rezonings, since I've started this process with this project, and we propose multi-zoning. We have, we've listened, we've changed, we've been dynamic, and we're here because we do believe that the comp plan, the planning staff, the planning board, they are on the right track as far as what's needed in this community and for this site. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, if there's anyone in opposition, you have five more minutes of rebuttal if anybody would like to have anything else to say. Don't have to, but you got five minutes if you'd like.
The only thing I'd like to say is that it seems like all the, everything that's being built from Monkey Junction down to Carolina Beach, most of it is on wetlands. And these developers are taking the wetlands and they're backfilling. And I've been living in my house in Lord's Creek for 22 years. Now, the water from any kind of storm is starting to back up in my yard. I sent you a picture of my yard on July the 30th. It was a hard rain, very hard rain, and in 15 minutes, it had, we had a couple of inches of rain just in one quarter. That was just in 15 minutes. And the engineers said at the planning board that the only recourse was to put in some storm piping or stumping instead of the retention, the retention, instead of the backfilling that would do that, it would not help. So I please ask you to take that in consideration. The traffic is one thing. We need a traffic like there that is timed, a timed traffic light, so that the people going to Carolina Beach and the people coming out of our neighborhoods can do it safely. So I ask you to please take that into consideration.
I wrote a letter to the applicant voicing my concerns about this project, and she wrote a letter back, and she stated, "Detailed design and grading is pending entitlement." Pending entitlement. Entitlement. If this lot is rezoned, there will be a great deal of entitlement. Entitled to build commercial business, entitled to increase density. There's a beautiful gigantic magnolia tree visible from the street of the side by the church, right about where Unit 2 is going. That's sad. I don't see the side view. I don't see the retaining walls. We're going from 32 feet to 17 feet. I see a fence, but I am afraid it's going to be three-story townhomes with commercial on the first floor, at least the option in the future, because they've got the entitlement now. Once you have that entitlement, you don't go back. Adding 10 homes to this space is fitting. I recommend that you deny this proposed rezoning. It is bad for us, bad for me. I feel sorry for myself and for those who will be directly affected if this goes through. Please consider the possibility that the comprehensive plan from 2016 no longer reflects the needs of our county and may have had faults from the beginning, especially in the area between Monkey Junction and Carolina Beach, which has been my home for 30 years, and I feel like I'm just watching it be destroyed. These smaller lots don't get as much pushback as the larger developments, because there are fewer numbers of people adjacent. And you keep adding up five acres here, five acres there, six acres here, six acres there, higher density, higher density. This applicant has another request for doing the same thing, coming up soon, down the road a little bit, surrounded by residential, and it's based again on this plan, and it's hurting us. 76,000 square feet of impervious surfaces, earthmoving, retaining walls, and then the buried pipes to redirect everything and which will essentially flush out our wetlands. Please say no. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and open for discussion with the commissioner. Anybody have anything to say?
Cindy, yeah. We've heard from a couple of the people in opposition about commercial development on this land. Is there any proposal that you're aware of here for commercial development?
None whatsoever. This is all residential. There is no commercial. They are all limited to two stories with a maximum height of 35 feet.
Congratulations on getting the support of the Cape Fear Alliance for Trees. It's pretty impressive.
It was important to me from the very beginning that that central area could be saved as best possible. Earlier proposals encroached in it, on it, into it, a lot more. This particular project, going down to 36 units, allowed me to really concentrate on it. And then using the civil engineer to do the preliminary grading plan, verified that we won't need any, I don't believe, retaining walls. We won't be grading inside of those boundaries. Those will be tree protection fencing. All of that is taken care of during the detailed design and by release for construction of the technical review committee only. And it is a condition we'll sign off upon any approval.
You know, it's the fall of the land, which is what you just addressed. If I heard you correctly, you're not going to have to do any other site improvements?
Absolutely, the site improvements. I assumed when I initially spoke or addressed this woman's email that there were means to stay out of that courtyard area and stay out of the surrounding buffer yard by means of the tree protection fencing, and then creative grading types of exercises, potentially like retaining walls, tree wells, stepped slabs. Other than the stepped slabs, the preliminary engineering has not shown the need for any retaining walls. If so, two to three feet, small areas behind the units that are at the back of that buffer area would be the only potential location of that type of grading.
Cindy, what gives me the most heartburn about this is the traffic issues, and I know that you've put a lot of time and effort into it. What I see, any way we cut this, is we have an acceleration lane and a deceleration lane. So I know we've gone down this way before. Please talk to me about it and show me where, raise my comfort level on that.
Right now, there is a deceleration lane of about 200 to 300 feet prior to Glen Arthur. The majority of that, if I might have my site plan, I can get that now. So there is Glen Arthur. That is the acceler, I mean, the deceleration stacking lane. It then tapers up into here. DOT has suggested, that that stacking go all the way up to there. It is still a turn lane. It is not an acceleration taper. We all drive differently. A lot of us probably don't drive in pure sense of the law. That being said, then the acceleration taper will go further, and my plan basically shows that extension to our driveway. That is no different than Market Street, other places along Carolina Beach Road, where there are third lanes. And those, that right-hand lane has right-turn arrows, but that doesn't mean that it can't have multiple driveways. What you don't want to have in this type of situation, because it has in fact gotten a very busy road, DOT didn't build three lanes on all of these roads. They built two lanes. They did the center leftovers, the U-turns. But as new development along the frontage of Carolina Beach Road occurs, it is their responsibility, and at the developer's cost, to extend those turn lanes, to provide those deceleration tapers. But the fact that there is a turn lane that has two or three accesses, whether it's the church and this project and Glen Arthur, that is not unusual. And I'll refer to the MPO representative here to add anything to that. So this has been preliminary reviewed by DOT. They provided the condition that the staff has incorporated, that the turn lane will be put in and the acceleration taper extended, the deceleration taper extended for this project if it's approved.
I think also, Cindy, the reducing the number of units is also an excellent idea from the plans that we've seen before. That's all the questions I have at this point.
I've got two or three. Is the, in the event that you got this approved, is that whole piece of property built out?
Yes. There would be no more available density. At R-5, it's eight units, the maximum is eight units an acre.
How, what, I mean, what kind of range price are you talking about?
It's always difficult to provide a market range when you're at least a year to a year and a half before detailed design and permitting by construction, putting it on the market. Our market is fluctuating every day. My guess would be the general rate around here, which is what, 425 is the mean for these types of middle housing, if you want to call it that.
Okay, and the fence, I'm not, I haven't got some clarity on that. What kind of fence are you putting between the two properties?
A transitional buffer can be a just purely vegetation. It can be incorporated fence. It can do both. You could put berms. Obviously, incorporating berms means clearing land. What the condition is, is that before the first shovel is in the dirt, tree protection fencing will be put along that 20-foot boundary, which is our setback. All the construction occurs. At the end of construction, when that tree protection fencing is taken down, the, an actual six-foot-high solid screening fence, a privacy fence, will be put along that 15-foot buffer mark. That, again, negates the need for a whole lot of clearing or grading in that area.
How tall, how big are the trees that you're going to leave there?
I mean, trees in this area, what, they're 20 to 40 feet. We don't have really tall trees anywhere around here. Not like in the Piedmont. But yes, in addition to the six-foot-high wooden fence, the trees are roughly 20 to 30 feet tall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
More of a comment than a question as we're at board discussion. One of the comments that Ms. Wolf made at the beginning of the presentation is that the, a bit of paraphrase, although I believe that the word was adamant, that the applicants are adamant that this property needs to be rezoned. And you did use the word adamant.
Yes.
And I would offer a counterpoint to that, which is that this board has been adamant that it not be rezoned on multiple occasions. And while I am not a moratorium person, there are some people in this room who would like for me to be, I will vote to approve a variety of projects in the future. It is acceptable for us to mark certain parcels and properties in our community as ones that need to remain just as they are, R-15. And I think that this parcel is one of those pieces of property. It is okay for us to say there are some that we're not going to rezone. And I think that it's consistent with this board's position over the last several times that this issue has been brought before us, for us to continue to adamantly explain to the property owners that we do not intend to rezone this property. So based on my comments, perhaps you can gather which way I'm planning to vote on this matter. I, of course, defer to the will of the majority of the board, but we don't have to rezone every piece of property in this community, and I don't think we need to rezone this one.
With due respect, Commissioner, he is adamant to develop this property. He owns it. It was not a contingency purchase or anything like that. He's adamant to develop it, is all I meant if I didn't say otherwise. The rezoning is peripheral to the development, certainly, but this property will be developed.
Okay. So I have a question. What percentage of this particular parcel is wet?
Do we know that? There is a very slim area of wetland. There is a very slim area of wetland along the stream bed that runs. There is a stream bed that runs here.
So you're saying that's the only part that's--
The wetland is along the top of bank of that.
The only area that's, that holds water is a wetland. But any other parts of it prone to flooding that you're aware of?
I showed you that. This area here today drains to a small pocket because it is undeveloped. And I believe that that has occurred, has created some issues with that.
Is that this property?
That I don't know.
Okay.
I think it was the gentleman's property that that happened to. But our grading plan takes that water to the pond now. It won't collect in that low area.
Well, I think, I think you referenced four that were here in the beginning, and maybe that was me that was not the fifth, but I've been here at least for one of the requests, July twenty-second. And I feel like, there is a trust factor here, I think, that is a little bit been, I wouldn't say damaged. I think this has been, the history here has been withdrawn, denied, withdrawn. This is the fourth coming up. And I think that's the concern with a lot of folks that live around there that deal with this day-to-day. And traffic is a concern too. All that is to say, this kind of stuff concerns me. The flooding in fifteen minutes concerns me, and I think that's a concern for a lot of folks in the community, especially in that area that have had to deal with it. So I, even though I wasn't here for all of the requests that came in, I understand exactly what folks are feeling about this particular issue. And I agree with my fellow commissioner here that we do not have to rezone every single piece of property that comes before us. So I don't know if that tells you where I'm at either, but I feel like I am in line with my fellow commissioner there.
Lord's Creek has no stormwater management. This and new projects do provide for it.
Mr. Chair. Ms. Wolf, just a question. I know this is a revised project, but how many times has this project came before us?
It's actually been before you three.
This is number three?
Yes. The first, it has been in front of the planning board more times than it has gotten all the way to the commissioners. It has transitioned a few times.
And so, correct. And that's what I thought. And my comment on this is when I'm out in the community, they are adamant that they do not want increased density in New Hanover County. And we see continual projects being annexed into the city of Wilmington because New Hanover County has really stood firm that they do not want increased density. And I think that's what you're hearing here on this board, is we're standing firm on our commitment to keep the, to keep the density down. And quite honestly, I don't know where the theory came from that we have to build a new home for everybody who wants to move to New Hanover County. We'd have to build a hundred-foot skyscrapers to do that because everybody wants to be here. So just that comment, I commend you on the reducing the density. And I agree with you, it's going to be developed into something, but I don't think you're gonna, not for me, I'm not inclined to increase density in New Hanover County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Cindy, how many homes could be, single-family under the existing R fifteen could be placed on this property?
Eleven.
Thank you.
Everybody's finished. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
I'd like to proceed with the vote, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to recommend denial of proposed rezoning. While I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the proposed housing type and density is within the range recommended by the community mixed-use, mixed-use place type. I find recommending denial of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the project places the attached dwelling units too close to existing single-family development.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Request, this is an unusual one. We've got two different special use permit applications that we're looking at, S twenty-four, dash oh four, and oh five. Request, the first one is a request by Bay Shore Town Homes LLC applicant on behalf of B-Safe Porter's Neck LLC property owners for a special use permit for a sixty-two-unit multifamily development with eighteen hundred, with eighteen of commercial space in a B-two regional business district on a three-point-two-one acre parcel of land located at eighty-one-thirty-eight Market Street. The second one is special use permit, S twenty-four oh five, is a request by Bay Shore Town Homes LLC applicant on behalf of Herbert Palm property owner for a special use permit for an additional dwelling allowance of two-hundred-and-forty-two row-style dwelling units in an R fifteen residential district on a thirty-point-two-two acre parcel of land located at eighty-one-hundred block of Market Street. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Before the hearing is opened, the county, deputy county attorney will provide an overview of the hearing procedures. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, quasi-judicial proceedings are handled a little bit differently. There are four criteria or elements that must be met, that must be set out as findings of fact and must be stated clearly on the record. It is up to you, the board, to weigh the evidence in front of you to determine if these four criteria have been met. One is will this project materially endanger the public health or safety? Two, does this project meet all required conditions and specifications in the Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO? Three, will this project substantially injure the value of the adjoining or abutting properties? And four, will this project be in harmony with the area in which it is located and in general conformity with the comprehensive land use plan for New Hanover County? Staff has compiled information from the applicant that may or may not support these required findings of fact. The board must state the reasons why the application does not meet these four criteria if the board decides so. If the board determines any of the above criteria cannot be made based on the evidence, that alone may provide the basis for denial. The board only needs to find that the evidence does not support one element, not all four, to deny an application. The board has the authority to determine if this application should be approved or denied based solely on the competent and material evidence presented during this public hearing. Nothing from the public forum that was held in front of the planning board should be considered because that was not in front of you. Therefore, we do not have a planning board member here for questions. Everything will be provided to you, and then you should be making that decision based on what's presented to you today. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Okay, because the special use permit process requires a quasi-judicial hearing, any person wishing to testify must be sworn in. All persons who signed in to speak and wish to present competent and material testimony, please stand forward to be sworn in right over here.
Tim, Caitlin. Mr. Shitman, Mr. Carroll.
I did not notice that.
Paul Smith. Craig Carlock. Dennis Burson. Brad White. Tim Mylon. Patrick Bowen. John Davenport. AJ. Rob Ballard. Brad. Allison. Don. Grady. Michael. Zachary. Courtney. Dan Michael. All right. So those of you who are kind of right in front of me, those of you who do not have your hand on a Bible, please wait. Please put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth to help you God? Thank you. Next round?
It was a little confusing.
It really was. I'm not at all confused.
opponent will each be allowed thirty minutes for their presentation and an additional ten minutes for rebuttal. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, this is a quasi-judicial public hearing for two special use permit requests involving multifamily residential in a B-two district and an additional dwelling allowance in an R fifteen district. Property is located at the eighty-one-hundred block of Market Street. And as a reminder, the site was the subject of a rezoning request last year. The applicant ultimately withdrew the request at the January twenty-twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting and resubmitted as these two special use permits. The aerial photography shows an existing vacant commercial building bordered by commercial development along Market Street and a tree farm to the southeast bordered by a single-family residential development. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles. Parcels were originally zoned R fifteen in the nineteen-seventies. At the time, the purpose of the district was to provide lower density due to the need for private wells and septic systems. Since then, public water and sewer has become available in the area. The B-two portion was rezoned in nineteen-eighty-five for compatibility with a business in operation at the time. This is the combined site plans for the two requests. The section outlined in blue is zone B-two, which allows residential dwelling units as part of a mixed-use development with approval of a special use permit. The section outlined in red is zone R fifteen, which allows increases to the base density of the district for additional dwelling allowances with approval of a special use permit. The ordinance requirements for each type of special use permit are different, which requires the two separate special use permit applications. The applicant has proposed conditions that neither project could be developed without the approval of both special use permits. Due to the relationship between the two projects, staff have included both in one presentation. Combined, the projects include a total of eighteen-hundred square feet of commercial space and three-hundred-and-four dwelling units, consisting of sixty-two multifamily units and two-hundred-and-forty-two row-style dwellings. Unified Development Ordinance states multifamily dwellings in the B-two district must be part of a mixed-use development established to provide innovative opportunities for an integration of diverse but compatible uses into a single development. Additional standards generally address requirements for mixed-use development, pedestrian infrastructure, use restrictions, shared parking, common areas, and requirement for building elevations. The site plan for the B-two requests includes a mixed-use building with commercial space and multifamily units fronting Market Street. The second building is proposed as multifamily units. The applicant's project narrative caps the total unit count at sixty-two, but would allow the site to be reconfigured with three buildings instead of two if approved as part of the mixed-use permit, or sorry, as part of the special use permit. That change would be allowed administratively by staff. The density of the B-two portion of the project is nineteen-point-three dwelling units per acre. The UDO does not set a prescribed or maximum density for mixed-use developments. Multifamily developments in the B-two district are required to include a mixed-use component that is limited to only uses permitted in the B-one district. While the TIA analyzes the project as a retail use, other land uses in the B-one district would be allowed. Parking is provided throughout the site and is proposed as shared parking between the multifamily dwellings and commercial uses. The concept plan also includes the proposed location of exterior light poles. Sidewalks are provided around the perimeter of both buildings shown on the plan with a sidewalk along the road to access the proposed row-style dwellings on the R fifteen portion of this project. One of the requirements for the special use permit application is submitting proposed building elevations for the commercial and the multifamily portion of the project. These are also included in your staff report and packet. The second special use permit is for an additional dwelling allowance to increase the allowed density in an R fifteen district. While the board did adopt changes to additional dwelling allowances last month, because this application was submitted before the amendment was adopted, it must be reviewed under the previous ordinance standards. The UDO contains supplementary standards for additional dwelling allowances regarding density, open space, and impervious surface limitations. The ordinance standards for additional dwelling allowances are different from a typical performance residential subdivision. For example, the base density may be increased up to ten-point-two dwelling units per acre. Special use permit request is for a maximum of eight-point-three-seven dwelling units per acre. Minimum open space requirement is thirty-five percent. There is an impervious surface limit of forty percent. There is a perimeter setback of twenty-five feet, which is slightly higher than the setback for performance residential. In addition, the maximum height in the R fifteen district is forty feet. However, additional dwelling allowances require structures over twenty-five feet tall adjacent to single-family residential to be set back equal to the height of the building. The applicant has also included a condition restricting the homes to a maximum of three stories not to exceed forty feet tall. Site plan for the additional dwelling allowance includes an amenity center, stormwater and open space, a condition to provide an overland relief path such as a drainage ditch or swale within a public drainage easement from the natural pond to the stormwater outfall. The homes are centered on the site with the road closest to the Porter's Point subdivision sited away from the existing homes and towards the adjacent open space. The ordinance requires a minimum of thirty-five-foot setback around the perimeter of the site. The applicant has included a condition that retains a minimum thirty-five-foot landscape buffer of existing vegetation around the site as a visual buffer. A road stub is provided to Braze Drive, which will be gated for emergency access only. A condition has been included guaranteeing a bicycle and pedestrian connection to Braze While not required by the ordinance, the applicants have also provided conceptual elevations of the proposed row-style homes. Project is estimated to increase AM traffic but would reduce PM peak hour trips compared to what could be developed under current zoning. The estimated traffic generated from the site is over the one-hundred peak hour threshold that triggers the ordinance requirements for traffic impact analysis. The site has existing access to Market Street and Braze Drive. The combined projects propose a ride-in, ride-out-only access on the Market Street with a gated emergency access-only connection to Braze Drive. The TIA requires an extended right-turn lane into the site and a traffic light at Cypress Pond Way. Vehicles wanting to travel south would be able to utilize U-turns at Cypress Pond Way or the Porter's Neck intersection. The site is also just south of the I-one-forty interchange. The comprehensive plan designates the area along Market Street as urban mixed-use and the area to the southeast as general residential. The urban mixed-use place type promotes multifamily and higher-density single-family development to provide a range of housing types, opportunities, and choices. The urban mixed-use place type does not recommend a maximum density. The majority of the project area is designated general residential, which encourages single-family and duplex residential development at a maximum density of eight dwelling units per acre. However, because of the general nature of place type borders, sites located in proximity to the boundaries between place types could be appropriately developed with either-- sites located in proximity to the boundaries between place types could be appropriately developed with either place type, allowing site-specific features and evolving development patterns in the surrounding area to be considered. The applicant has proposed conditions for both special use permit requests. The proposed conditions for the multifamily in B two include a condition that neither project could be developed without the approval of both special use permits, incorporating a section of I one property for the internal roadway, common restrictive covenants, easements, preserving existing trees and required buffers, and building height. The applicant proposed conditions for the additional dwelling allowance are related to a condition that neither project could be developed without the approval of both special use permits, incorporating the I one property, common restrictive covenants, easements, preserving existing trees and buffers, building height, emergency access-only connection to Braze Drive, additional buffers adjacent to existing residential, bicycle and pedestrian interconnectivity, and drainage. As a reminder, we just heard earlier, when the board evaluates the request during quasi judicial hearings, they must determine that the following four conditions are met. That the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and approved. The use meets all required conditions and specifications of the Unified Development Ordinance. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or the use is a public necessity. And the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the Comprehensive Land use Plan for New Hanover County. After an analysis of the proposed use and the information provided as part of the application package, staff have compiled two sets of facts provided in the applications and identified through technical review and analysis and organized them by the applicable conclusion. These findings are preliminary and additional relevant facts may be presented during the public hearing. The compiled facts for each request may or may not support the board's ultimate decision. For conclusion one, for the B two request, the preliminary findings generally address utilities, fire protection, access, traffic generation, and environmental features. For conclusion two, the preliminary findings generally address requirements for mixed-use development, commercial uses, sidewalks, shared parking, open space, mixed-use buildings, building elevations, site plan review, setbacks, requirements for enclosed commercial space, parking, performance residential setbacks, and building spacing. Conclusion three of the B two request addresses existing conditions and property values. Conclusion four addresses the comprehensive plan and the applicant proposed conditions. Conclusion one of the additional dwelling allowance generally addresses utilities, fire protection, access, traffic generation, and environmental features. Conclusion two addresses reductions for tidally influenced water bodies, maximum unit count, floodplain requirements, proximity to the urban mixed-use place type, primary access requirements, internal roadways, open space, limits on impervious surface, perimeter setbacks, maximum building height, building spacing, landscape buffers, parking, signs, public sewer, private infrastructure maintenance and covenants, site plan review, wetlands, stormwater, major deviations, and parking. Conclusion three for the additional dwelling allowance addresses existing conditions and property values, and conclusion four addresses the comprehensive plan and the applicant proposed conditions. This concludes my presentation. Caitlin Surza with W M P O and Tim Lowe, county engineering, are here, and the applicant has prepared a presentation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question for you.
Sorry. Thank you. Um, now the applicant's presentation.
Chairman, are we waiting on Lee Ann or?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Gary Shipman. I represent the applicants. At the outset, I want to make particular note and objection to the fact that staff sent to you email communications which the president of the Marsh Oaks Homeowners Association solicited from people in the community. That is the type of incompetent and immaterial and inadmissible evidence that simply cannot be considered, Mr. Zapple, as you know, in a special use permit. If you've read them, which I assume you have, they were provided to you by staff, you must disregard them and you must assure this applicant that you will, that you cannot consider unsworn statements from those without standing who are not experts expressing opinions about matters that only experts can express opinions upon. The evidence that we offer in support of our application is contained in the binder, which, as you will see, is what I'll consider a brief of sorts, my PowerPoint presentation. The affidavit of Brad White, the affidavit of Rob Ballin, the affidavit of Patrick Bowen, the affidavit of John Davenport, Jr., the affidavit of David of Alice Ingrubritson, affidavit of Tim Mylan, and the affidavit of Roy Carroll. Would you each stand up, whose names I just read? Do each of you affirm that the information contained in your affidavits is true to the best of your knowledge? If I might, some of this will be redundant with what staff has presented. This is the site plan and its relationship to Porter's Neck Road and Market Street. Of particular note here is the areas in purple. You will see that this industrial-zoned site, the border of that with Marsh Oaks is almost double the border of the proposed site. Next, you will see what the shared borders are for this site and what the uses are that are being made of these shared borders. This site is a mixture of urban mixed use. It is in the Porter's Neck growth node. And from the staff report and as staff made clear, urban mixed use promotes development of a mixture of uses at higher densities. The types of uses encouraged include multifamily residential. Legislatively, this decision has already been made that with this urban mixed-use classification, you are promoting that in these areas, the highest densities permitted in the county are allowed. Similarly, in the Porter's Neck growth node, this is from the county's own website. It encourages higher densities than the surrounding areas. High-density development is promoted in growth nodes. And from your own website, the growth node is the area in the future land use map which legislatively you have adopted where more density, not less, will be encouraged. As staff's presentation shows, we clearly comply with the maximum density allowed even with the additional dwelling allowance, which is up to ten. We're down in the eight area in the R fifteen. In the B two area, the proposed uses are less intense than what uses could be made as a matter of right in the B two area. As staff noted, this particular property, properties were the subject matter of a prior rezoning application and based upon the information that we heard and the feedback that we got, the density was reduced by forty-four units. The density towards the R fifteen was reduced by eighty-six units. The differing housing types which the land use plan encourages was incorporated. The total impervious surface was reduced and more flood control measures were added to this project than will ever be required, either under your ordinance or under the state standards and, as Mr. Ballin will testify, has testified. The after-development drainage characteristics of the surrounding property will be better than if the property remained in its undeveloped state. We believe that the staff has provided many comments that are supportive of the notion and idea that this project is certainly in harmony. This is the site plan for the B two. Again, as staff noted, with an administrative change, two buildings can be turned into three. These are the conceptual elevations for the B two. We have an extensively engineered drainage plan for the B two. We have an extensively engineered utility plan for the B two. The R fifteen. You will see the stormwater improvements in the R fifteen. You will see the existing vegetative borders that are maintained. You will see the existing tree scape that is maintained. When I heard all of the presentations associated with why the rezoning should be approved, they're amplifying what this project does. It preserves, not tears down trees. It has buffering multiple times more than is required under the ordinance. These are the conceptual elevations. You will see, as staff noted out, not only the stormwater facility, but the drainage improvements that will be provided in this area from the natural pond to the storm fall or the storm outfall shown on this diagram. The stormwater characteristics of the surrounding area will be improved with the approval of this project. Now, the open space. The existing live oak cluster up near Market Street is maintained. We've got over a mile and a half of interconnected sidewalks, nature trails. We've got amenities which include a pool, cabana, outdoor kitchen. Again, as this shows, the buffers that are provided here exceed the minimum requirements multiple times. This is a picture of what we see coming off of Market Street. These clusters will be maintained. This is the existing conditions on these sites, both in the B two and the R fifteen. These vegetative buffers will be maintained, including the one that is near Lantana Lane uh, on the uh, boundary of this property sort of towards the northeast end. Again, this illustrates that the minimum buffers are far more than minimum. We're providing up to twelve times more than what the ordinance requires for buffering, including preservation of existing trees on the sites. This is the Porter's Point boundary. You will see the vegetation there that is going to be maintained. This is an illustration of the typical vegetation adjacent to Porter's Point. Now, this is the entirety of the plan and the importance is this property will be combined into one tract, not two tracts as it is currently. What that ensures is that the future use of this property is locked in forever as against the creeping heavy industrial use that borders not only this property, but borders Marsh Oaks. Traffic improvements. As our traffic engineer will tell you, the daily counts for the project that you just approved for sheets without the residential component are more than the traffic that will be generated by this project without the improvements. W M P O provided an updated approval in December of twenty twenty-four with two scenarios. One that called for my term, full-access use of Braze Drive, and the other that approved an emergency access only. It is the applicant's proposal that we have an emergency access only responding to the concerns of those in Porter's Point, although I would say, as the residents of Porter's Point know, the owner of the R fifteen tract sold the property that would become Porter's Point to the developer of Porter's Point and reserved an easement over this R fifteen property for the development of that property. Next, if this R fifteen property is developed as R fifteen without access onto Market Street combining the tracks, one hundred percent of the traffic associated with this project will go where? Down Braze Drive. It can't get onto Market Street. The transportation points are shown on this. The gated emergency access only on Braze Drive is illustrated here. But I want to emphasize the improvements that the developer will be making at the developer's expense more than A, the project that you just approved with higher traffic counts, and B, more than what would be required given the amount of traffic generated from this site. First, from the A B C store heading north, there will be a continuous through turn lane all the way to Porter's Neck Road. Next, there will be at number two, a southbound signal, a signalized ability to make a U-turn at Cypress Pond Way, and again, number three, a signalized left-turn U-turn at Cypress Pond Way. It will be better when finished than it is presently. Again, an illustration of the improvements to be constructed, including the extending the right turn lane over some four hundred feet. The key points. It provides density in an area that you've already identified legislatively for high-density growth. You've already crossed that bridge. Next, it adjoins, as does Marsh Oaks, an I one-zoned property, which includes uses as a matter of right or special use, which the Court of Appeals has said you've made a decision they're compatible, a strip club. Legislatively, you've made a determination that the property that adjoins our property and adjoins the Marsh Oaks property can be used for something far more objectionable to the residents and including my client. The stormwater infrastructure exceeds what is, well, maybe some people like strip clubs. I mean, not to be too critical, maybe some of them do. But the stormwater infrastructure improves the status quo than if the property were left undeveloped. As you know, the stormwater requirements require that you not exceed post-development. As you know, the stormwater requirements require that you not exceed post-development, the amount of stormwater pre-development. We've got two parcels that are going to be combined into one. The scope and quality of the traffic improvements go far beyond what is required. It helps existing traffic conditions on Market Street. The updated TIA takes into consideration the new traffic counts with the military cutoff extension opening and the reduction of traffic on Market Street than from the time this project was originally proposed. It provides needed housing. How many times did we hear that already today about the need for housing? Now, the evidence. Note the two italics that I have, the use will not materially endanger the public health. The use meets all required, required conditions and specifications of the UDO. There cannot be any debate about that. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property. The location and character of the use will be in harmony. Here are the witnesses. Mr. Mylum, who says not only is this project needed to provide needed residential housing, it's in harmony and will have no substantial injury to the value of adjoining properties. Mr. Davenport indicates the traffic infrastructure improvements that will be made, that the project will not result any, into any significant increase in traffic onto Market Street. It will enhance the flow of traffic onto Market Street. Mr. Bowen, you'll remember, Mr. Bowen has presented information to this board and to the city of Wilmington back in 2024 about the need for residential housing in New Hanover County. His opinion is, the proposed project, the current market supports this project. The project design enables it to meet a variety of household sites. The site's appropriate. The projected rent or household growth will continue through 2029, that the absorption rate, contrary to suggestions made by those who aren't experts, the absorption rate will continue at its current pace, that there exists a demand for housing of this type, that the existing inventory that we have today by, will be fully absorbed by 2027. Brad White, MAI Appraiser, who has provided specific case studies to show that multifamily adjacent to R-15 zoned areas does not result in any diminution in value, much less a substantial diminution in value. And the actual market data of residential properties located in New Hanover County adjacent to multifamily projects shows values have increased, not decreased. Rob Ballin, Paramount Engineering, he details the stormwater infrastructure that will enhance the drainage characteristics and that the proposed stormwater infrastructure from a safety perspective will not endanger, materially endanger, the safety of the public. Allison, she walks through the changes in this project, the density that was decreased, the parking buffers being more than required, density being less than the maximum permitted. And then finally, Mr. Carroll. When we talk, Mr. Robin Bark, about someone who gives more than he takes, that describes Mr. Carroll, that describes what he's already done here. Now, the staff report, they've walked through it. We again believe that the conclusions in the staff report show that we have produced material and competent evidence of compliance. These are but a few of the points staff pointed out what they are. We meet the maximum density calculations. The additional dwelling allowance requires 35% open space. We have more than that. The additional dwelling allowance or the multifamily in the B2 portion meets the specifications of the ordinance. The additional dwelling allowance for the R-15 portion meets the specifications of the ordinance. We don't have any conservation areas that are going to be impacted or that will not be preserved, and with the assistance of our engineer, New Hanover County Engineering identified the area at the easternmost boundary of this property where enhancements will be made to the natural stormwater flow from the pond. Schools. Project is expected to have a minimal impact on school enrollment. Again, this board has already looked at the utilization of the county schools. This is what was presented in 2024 to this board by Cropper. Elementary schools. In 2010, as you know, we adopted a neighborhood schools model. Obviously, with some areas being more developed than others, schools located in densely populated areas have more students in them than schools in less, in less densely populated areas. We created a magnet school concept. By attendance, it didn't work. The Cropper report notes that as a unit of schools, elementary schools are not overcapacity in New Hanover County. Porter's Neck was overcapacity in 2017 when it opened, but instead of enacting a solution by redrawing district boundary lines to send kids that are going to Porter's Neck to the under-capacity Blair, the board chose not to do that. Middle schools, they're not overcapacity, especially the Holly Shelter Middle School, where students from this project would go. And as a matter of fact, Cropper has told us that over the next 10 years, the projected increase of students in the middle school is less than 100 students. High schools. Laney is at 117% capacity, has been that way for years and years and years. The other two high schools for the next two years are projected to be, according to Cropper, undercapacity. The New Hanover County Board of Education made a decision to send students who would otherwise go to New Hanover to send them to an overcrowded Laney. That's not the decision that this board made. Note what the staff report says, that in terms of what we projected in terms of enrollment in 2020 to 2021, there's actually been a decrease, a net decrease per residential unit. Here's what staff indicates to be the total impact to six grade levels at the elementary school, three grade levels at middle school, four grade levels at Laney High School. Again, here's the evidence, and it's been summarized in our application. The use will not materially endanger the public health. The use meets all requirements and conditions of the UDO for the B2. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property, with that qualifier substantially being the operative term. The location and character of the use will be in harmony. This is number four, and I'll get to that back in just a minute. Same showing with respect to the SUP in the R-15. We meet all of the required conditions. We have made out a prima facie case of entitlement to the SUP. Now, here is this issue about harmony, meaning the inclusion of a particular use in the ordinance as one which is permitted under certain conditions is equivalent to a legislative finding that the prescribed use is in harmony. So this project can't be denied on the basis that it's not in harmony. You've already made a legislative determination that it is. The inclusion of a use in a zoning district, even when a special use permit is required, establishes a prima facia case that the use conforms with the comprehensive plan unless material and competent evidence is presented by those in opposition that would say to the contrary. Your staff hasn't told you that because that's not the case. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but with that, I'd like to turn the floor, if I might, over to Mr. Carroll.
Good afternoon. It's great, Mr. Chairman and board members, it's great to be before you this, this evening. I do owe you an apology. About a year ago, we, this case was before you, or a similar case, not the exact case, and I had a conflict, couldn't attend, but I watched it by video, great video, clear. And I just want to go on record to say that we took those notes and I took them back to ours too, and, and they, so they didn't fall on deaf ears. We heard density, we cut our density by 10%. We heard it was vague, certain aspects of the plan were very vague, common space, open areas, very, very specific plan before you this evening. And we heard, you know, we didn't do a good job when the question came up, are you going to sell these or keep these, and it, it just was kind of clinky, if you ask me. But anyways, I'm here to tell you, I keep just about everything I build. I will keep this project if it's successful and, and passing with your consideration. And we will keep this project for as long as I'm in charge of the company, and hopefully that's a long time to come. What does that mean? Well, if I sell, I don't have control. I can't tell you that it's going to be maintained to the highest standards. I can't tell you the grass is going to be growed, or, you know, landscaping's going to look unruly, or whatever, but I can tell you that if I own it, you have my word, it will be maintained to the highest standards. It will be an awesome additionist community. And speaking of awesome additionist community, this is a, is an area of housing, I've, I've sit here and, and heard, I mean, I just about had our case presented by other cases before you this evening. There is a need in this county, denying housing, a housing project's not going to stop people from moving into your wonderful community. Love it, stay down here as much as I can, but I can tell you that this fills a niche. Now, where's that niche? A niche is between garden, garden, garden-style flats, you know, and, and that's, we didn't bring that before you because we thought this would be a great buffer, the townhouse with garage would be a great buffer and a great addition to your housing stock. You need that housing stock. We're talking about housing for, you know, teachers and firemen and policemen and folks like that, and not everyone wants to live in a flat, and not everyone, hey, the fact is, you know, housing starts today in your community at over $400,000. Now, you know, school teacher salaries, police salaries, firemen, those folks that support us and take care of us, unfortunately, you know, a lot of those folks cannot afford the American dream today. So what does this give them? This gives them a stepping stone. Not everyone wants to, again, live in a flat, start in a home. They don't want somebody above them or below them. We built lots of that, you know, if you tell me, they're really going to build, going to build a bunch of flats, you know, we'll definitely listen to it, but I, I think this property is too valuable for that. So the housing stock that's before you this evening is a housing stock of townhomes for those people in transition from buying that American dream and living in a flat garden style apartment. I thank you for your consideration and be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Not to remind the comments that were previously made in your rezoning considerations. Acceptable transition. This is an acceptable transition for the uses that could otherwise and are otherwise being made of property that borders this. Robust tree preservation, we say we're going to encourage that, that does this. Preserving natural space, this plan does that. We're desperate to increase supply, we're told by those who are in the know, this project does that. And consistent with legislatively, the decisions that were made by this board as to what kind of uses, higher intensity uses in this growth node, that would be encouraged. So this is not a project that is not consistent with your land use plan, it's totally consistent with your land use plan. This is not a project that's not in harmony. You've legislatively made that determination that it is, or at least that it can be. Happy to have any of the witnesses that we presented answer any questions that any of you may have, and I appreciate your, your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Now, the opponent has 30-minute presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. and Ms. Vice Chair, members of the board. Homeowners Association. Tonight, we have several affidavits we'll go through on the PowerPoint, but I'd like to have Courtney Coryer stand up. She's the president of the Marsh Oaks HOA. Just have a few questions as a little bit of a baseline to get started. Ms. Coryer, are you the president of the Marsh Oaks HOA?
Yes.
Are you, have you, as in your capacity for the Marsh Oaks HOA, retained me and other experts to oppose the applications that are before the board tonight?
Yes, we have.
Is the HOA a nonprofit organization?
Yes, we are.
How much money approximately have you expended in hiring me and other consultants and attorneys to help me and experts to oppose this application tonight?
Depending upon what your final invoice is, at least $30,000.
And did you actually have to previously appear to oppose the rezoning that was done about a year ago that was turned down, but the vote was pulled?
Yes, I did.
How much time personally have you invested as the president of the HOA on behalf of the members of the HOA to spearhead the opposition tonight?
This has well exceeded a full-time 40-hour job for me for the last year and a half to two years consistently, not only for myself, but also for all of the volunteer residents who have assisted with this.
Couple of, first, are there several property owners that live with, well within the 500-foot radius in Marsh Oaks subdivision?
Yes, there are. There are at least 28.
And are they opposed as well to the applications tonight?
Yes, they are unanimously opposed to this application.
Thank you, Ms. Coryer. What I'd like to do is start off with what Mr. Shipman has talked about with respect to harmony in this, this business about pre-legislatively determining as though we have no ability to oppose the harmony aspect. Actually, the correct standard of the law is you have pre-legislatively determined that this could be harmonious in this district. It's not a rubber stamp and it's not a guarantee. You don't need to take my word for it. You can take the word of the Court of Appeals in the Peter Siley versus Boon Board of Adjustment. May I approach?
Thank you.
Is that a case?
Yes, ma'am.
The case has been handed, handed out to you right now, is directly on point, where townhomes were being proposed in a residential area, and the applicant was making the pitch that, well, you've pre-legislatively determined that these townhomes can go in here, so it's, by law, per se, harmonious, and the court rejected that argument and said that if there is substantial material incompetent evidence supported by the opponents of those, of that application in townhomes, then the board is well within its right to turn the application down, finding that it is not harmonious with the surrounding neighborhoods. Now, I'm going to go back to, I'm going to try to navigate, I'm not very tech savvy, this PowerPoint. What you have here tonight are two properties. Close your eyes for a minute, and I want you to sit there and say to yourself, I got 33 acres and about 72 single-family homes could be put on these 33 acres, but the applicant wants you to believe that it is completely consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods to go from 72 single-family homes to 4.22% times multiple over that to 304 units. You've already heard the standards for your, your decision tonight, I won't belabor You've already heard the standards for your, your decision tonight. I won't belabor them. But our focus tonight is on two. Obviously, you've heard a little bit about the harmony, but also the fact that it poses a substantial and grave public health and safety concern based upon the density, the egregious density and the traffic counts and what's going to happen with the burdening of an already death trap called Market Street in this area. We have Zach Bug who's here tonight. He's a P E, PhD, he's our expert on the TIA stuff. The application's TIA tonight was done in December of 2022. It was actually scoped in August of 2022, three years ago, before the Market Street, I mean, the military cutoff extension was opened up. In December of last year, the applicant submitted its pending applications with a build-out year of 2027, when it started out as a build-out year of 2024. So now, if they build it out as of 2027, the TIA is going to be based on five years instead of the initial two years. It then updated with the supplemental technical memo showing a revised townhome count and retail space without accounting for any actual increased traffic and new or proposed unrelated development already approved by the WMPO. The opening of the military cutoff extension, in fact, has not reduced traffic. The WMPO counts done in 2022 and 2024, before and after the extension was opened, show a traffic volume increase of 3%. This data does not, was not included in the applicant's 2024 memo. There's developments that are not included in the applicant's memo that show build-outs for the year of 2027. Based on the next slide, at least 1,332 new residential units and 157,000 square feet of new commercial space will have been added since the old 2022 TIA report. Some of those projects you can see here, the proposed Bay Shore Townhome developments, but then you've got Middle Sound West, Amberly Landing Apartments, the Pinnacle, and Scott Hill Hospital Complex. The TIA report also uses a low traffic growth rate. While the TIA report was completed three years ago, scoped, it may have also underestimated the actual traffic impact by using only a 1% traffic growth, growth rate, when 2% is more typically assumed and the actual traffic growth has been 2.7% for Market Street. This coming from Mr. Bug. There's also the use by the applicant of the ITE 220 code. It's beyond my pay grade, but basically, as, as per Mr. Bug's affidavit, the 220 code is used for multifamily trip calculations that results in a 10 to 20% less trips than using the ITE 215. Why does that matter? The ITE 215 code is for townhome trip calculations such as the one being appro, being proposed by the developer. In the past three years, this stretch of Market Street has showed a total of 1,024 accidents with 223 entries in the past three years. We also have with us tonight Michael Rose, who's a former city planner for Greenville, South Carolina, a land use and town planner for Central Illinois Council of Government, past town manager or administrator for Pineville, Harrisburg, and Topsail Beach. The reasons why, in his affidavit, he says the proposed developments are not in harmony with the New Hanover County 2016 comprehensive plan is as follows. It's way too high in density. General residential calls for low density, two to six dwellings per unit, per acre, or single-family, one to six dwelling units per acre, not townhomes. The R15 section of this development is proposing 8.4 dwelling units per acre. The project lacks multiple entry points. Ernest, or Ernie Olds, former chairman of the New Hanover County Planning Board and a vice president and principal at Becker Morgan as an architect. He looked at it in his affidavit, he looked at it through the lens of an architect about this development and its health and safety, as well as its harmony. Mr. Olds says in his affidavit, it's too aggressive on the density, that it's too much density than appropriate for the location. And he suggested a single-family development with density of three units per acre. It has poor entry and exit traffic design because all traffic is being routed through the parking lot of the two commercial buildings near Market Street. Number three, it lacks lawn and yard space. There's an urban aesthetic that is not in keeping, not in harmony with the surrounding locations of Marsh Oaks and Porter's Point. The design, he, Mr. Olds says, is more like what would be found in downtown Charlotte. Probably the most demonstrable exhibit for the lack of harmony of this project is this snippet from your zoning map that goes from the north of Gordon Road to the lows near Porter's Neck. All along Market Street is Zone B2, but not one single piece along Market Street from that stretch is multifamily-abutting Market Street, with one exception. The Amberly Apartments that you turned down on the rezoning, rightfully so. And then they went and petitioned for voluntary annexation so that they could put multifamily in there. That's the only one. There's another one by Mr. Maynard off Lindire Road, B2 multifamily, but it's not directly on Market Street. Because B2 is supposed to have your commercial on the market and behind it is supposed to be your residential. That's transition. Mr. Shipman points to the industrial nature of the land. That's what is supposed to be on Market Street. It's been there. And I would submit to you that the industrial is far less of an intense use and far less of a density concern and health and safety concern than having 304 multifamily units dumping onto and off of Market Street where they propose to do U-turns, U-turns on Market Street. Pictures don't lie. That's what you have. You are being asked to approve the first ever multifamily on this stretch of Market Street as a special use permit. It is not harmonious based on the fact of looking at your zoning map right now and the fact that only one multifamily exists on that stretch. The R15 parcel is not entirely in the growth node. The growth node designation applies only to the 3.2 acres parcel, Zone B2. The proposed development for B2 parcel does not meet the full standards of being a growth node because it does not promote either pedestrian activity or connecting to public transportation. There's no bus stop within approximately 10 miles of this entry point of the applicant's development. There's no sidewalk access to the Oak Landing Shopping Center from inside the B2 parcel. Now we go through and do a deep dive on your, on your comprehensive plan. It doesn't satisfy at least 25 of the 30 items you look for in a plan. And I've got them listed there. They're not preserving open space and agricultural land. He wants you to believe with that slide that he showed you that putting 304 units on 30 acres, 33 acres is preserving open space because they dump a few trees in here. But they want you to ignore the three-story concrete jungle of 304 units with a limited entryway and exitway from the development as being preserve, preservation of open space. I could go on. It doesn't, it, it doesn't support multimodal transportation, encouraging a safe and walkable communities. That's what Mr. Olds and Michael Barrick, who's a certified safety planner, talk about as the lack of safe transportation and lack of safe pedestrian access for folks who are going to be walking, jogging, or using their vehicles on a road that's going through a parking lot off of Market Street to the narrow, narrow access way to the back to get to the other part, the R15 that they are seeking to have the additional allowances. The border issues are not addressed by the proposed development plan. They don't talk about upstream runoff sources not being mitigated from the Porter's Neck Center, the Oak Landing Shopping Center, Harris Teeter Fuel Station, and so forth, and the ABC Store. You, the local government, may say no to a new development when schools have reached a maximum capacity. The local schools, we all know this, are over capacity. They say that there's going to be 304 multifamilies coming in here, but not any increase in the schools. They talk about how there is a need for housing. Why can't you just do the single-family like it was zoned for the past 50 years? And put your 72 single-family homes on there? That's satisfying the housing need. And make no mistake, tonight's application is not about whether their desired development can be supported by the public. It's whether or not it should be allowed under your zoning ordinance as a special use permit where they are increasing the density four-plus fold. Zoning regulations shall be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan and shall be designed to facilitate the efficient and adequate provision of transportation. Nothing about this development that they're proposing is going to facilitate any transportation, much less safely or in a healthy way along this Market Street corridor. It's not going to do anything with respect to serving the schools and making them less crowded. There's some additional slides in the appendix to the presentation. They're talking about the approvals in the TIA, the Market Street TIA's. We've got information there from Slide 18 that shows the amount, the data supporting the traffic accidents. The data from Rebecca Ross emailed with the county about the schools' overcapacity that was sent on August 28th of 2025. You've got the link there to the school of government that talks about how communities facing school overcrowding. When a school has reached maximum capacity, the local government may say no to new development. You then have the affidavit of Zach Bug. Let me see if I can, are you able to bring out the screen to the bookmarks just so I can? It'll be over there to the left, yes, sir? So Tab 1 was the slide presentation. Tab 2 is Mr. Bug's affidavit. Tab 3 is Mr. Olds affidavit, if you can hit that. All of these affidavits have the respective resumes or past work history of these experts that have been retained by my client. The next one is the affidavit of Michael Rose, who had all the planning and city planning experience. And then finally, we have the affidavit of Michael Barrick. Michael Barrick's resume is attached. He's a master safety professional. He's certified safety health manager. He has extensive experience in analyzing the safety, general safety and analytics of any given particular instance. And in this case, he looked at this project and whether or not it posed a significant public safety and health concern. And as we go further down his affidavit, let me see. Are you able to, I'm sorry, yes. He lays out the concerns he has. He cites and is attached to his affidavit articles about pedestrian safety from the National Transportation Safety Board that talks about the inherent dangers and the elevated risk of parking lot facilities and commercial parking lots with pedestrian safety and pedestrian traffic, as well as vehicular safety and traffic. There is a substantial material endangerment of the public's health and safety as Mr. Barrick has laid out in his affidavit, as has also been laid out with the design critiques by Mr. Olds and Mr. Rose. And finally, on Tab 6. 334 residents of New Hanover County have signed this petition opposing tonight's proposed development. 92% of the signatures come from adjacent Marsh Oaks and Porter's Point subdivision and other Porter's Neck neighborhoods, all within the 28411 zip code. All addresses have been verified. All the petitions, contact information has also been verified. If you scroll to the next page of, and the following page will come eventually to the petition. This shows all of the signatures of those opposed to tonight's applications. I will yield at this time, absent any questions, for anyone else that wishes to be heard on this because I only represent the Marsh Oaks folks in the HOA. But I would urge this board, as you did with the rezonings, albeit it's slightly different, there's nothing different here about the lack of harmony. There's nothing different here about this application. In fact, it is significantly exacerbating the concerns you should have about the health and safety of the folks in Marsh Oaks, the folks that are going to be going to and from their places of work and business and homes on Market Street and the density calculations that they are bringing to you tonight. For all of those reasons, we would ask that this board uphold and find that this project is not harmonious and it doesn't materially endanger the public's health and safety. And for those two reasons, it should be denied under your, your UDO and this special use permit application, both of them be soundly rejected. Thank you.
There were four of the people that had signed up. First would be Michael Barrick.
I had them sign up in the event that they needed to come forward and testify, but because of the affidavits that I've also tendered into the record, hard copy and flash drive.
Okay, so how about, will Zachary Bug come under that?
He's one of ours too.
How about Courtney Corrier?
She's already testified briefly.
And Mike Rose?
He's already part of the affidavit.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. So now we'll come back to the applicant's rebuttal. You have up to 10 minutes, Mr. Shipman.
This map doesn't lie. When we talk about harmony. The idea, notion that affiliates are telling you that this property is not in the Porter's Neck growth node or does not contain an urban mixed-use classification is contrary to what your own staff has told you. Next, architects can't give opinions about traffic? Architects can't give opinions about safety? Here are their permitted uses, just some of them, in the I-1 whose border doubles that of the subject property. Airports, emergency service facilities, a post office, adult entertainment establishments, outdoor recreation facilities, banks, mini warehouses, commercial kitchens, a microbrewery, a restaurant, boat dealer, car wash, equipment rental, fuel sales, mobile home building sales, transportation vehicle service and storage facilities, vehicle rentals, chemical manufacturing. This county has already crossed in a prior SUP denial. This notion that generalized fears, even from those who purport to be experts, are not sufficient to deny an SUP permit. That's not, evidence is not competent. No one's even addressed the notion that the stormwater improvements that will be made with this project will render the after-development condition of the surrounding areas safer. Traffic? If indeed, the traffic issues that the opponents suggest that exist, exist, WMPO would never have approved this TIA, never, ever. So this is an attack on the very process that this county and the city and other counties and cities rely upon to ensure that at least as it pertains to traffic, that we're not going to have an issue with safety. going to have an issue with safety. The opinions provided by those who oppose this project don't even touch on the traffic infrastructure improvements that will be part of this project, that aren't a part of the project that you have already approved. Mr. Davenport, come up here, please, sir. Mr. Davenport, will the traffic from the Sheets, uh, project that this board just approved, exceed the traffic council in this project?
Twice the traffic.
Explain why.
That's just the land use that you approved. I mean, Sheets is twelve, fourteen gas, gasoline pumps. It's twenty-four hours a day, so it generates traffic all day, seven days a week. It's just a completely different land use, um, so it, it's a high turnover. It's got a restaurant in it. We actually talked about that when I came up one time before, comparing what's here to, I actually use the Sheets, because we've done several Sheets. I don't have anything, I like, my kids like Sheets, I like Sheets, but it does generate a lot of traffic, just a simple nature of that.
And, and how would you?
It's got drive-through. I mean, they're just, it's a land use that generates as much traffic almost as Chick-fil-A.
And how would you compare the traffic infrastructure improvements that this project will provide versus what you saw that the Sheets project won't provide?
Well, we're putting in a traffic signal. I know someone was asking questions about U-turns there. We're putting in a traffic signal to facilitate that. Anyone that talks about U-turns on Market Street knows that a median was put out there that causes a lot of U-turns. In our case, we're putting a signal in to facilitate the safety of that, whereas in some cases, they turn without a signal.
Thank you, John. So the suggestion has been made that the last time that an applicant came before you to propose multifamily quote "on Market Street" unquote was Amberly Shores. And of course, the Marsh Oaks Home and Homes Association opposed that, and we see how that turned out. More than forty percent more density was put on that site once the city annexed it. There are almost six hundred units at Amberly Shores now, more than forty percent more than what they were seeking when they asked for a rezoning. So the idea and notion that you're somehow by denying this SUP gonna reduce density, it's not so. Allowing this SUP will control what happens with the site. Two sites will become one. The stormwater infrastructure will be better after development than it is now. There are no appraisers that have come to you, uh, from, uh, the opposition who indicate that there will be a material diminution in value, because we provided you the case studies that show to the contrary. Projects in Wilmington, New Hanover County, adjacent to multifamily, suffered no diminution in value. Primaphasia, this is in harmony, unless material incompetent evidence is presented that it's not. And in all due respect, affidavits from people from ain't, that ain't from around here that take issue with what your staff has already concluded is not material incompetent evidence that rebuts the primaphasia showing of harmony. It just isn't. Now, what are the alternatives? Deny it? Allow it? Allow it with the conditions? I don't hear anything from the opposition that objects to the emergency access uni- use only of Bray's Drive. I don't hear anyone who takes issue that the improvements that will be made with the traffic infrastructure that will be provided will make Market Street better than it is now. So, if you deny this SUP, someone said earlier, the site's going to be developed. Whether it's developed this way, developed another way, developed as two parcels instead of one, this board won't have control over that. What you will assure is that the R-15, if it is developed as such, separate from the B-two, that one hundred percent of the traffic from the R-15 will go down Bray's Drive. The very thing that those who have opposed this say they do not want, but it will happen as a matter of right. It will happen, because there is an easement that is there, and the owners in Porter's Point cannot prevent it from being used for all of the access on this R-15. We've listened to the concerns. We've reduced the density. We've increased the buffers. The opponents poo-poo that. They can't. How can you throw rocks at a developer who is increasing the buffers by twelve times what is required? Don't you wish to encourage that? Question mark, question mark? I think we do. Material competent evidence has been produced. Primaphasia case has been made. That primaphasia case has not been rebutted. And in all due respect, we respectfully request that the SUP application be, again, happy to answer any questions anybody has.
We'll wait until we, wait until we close the hearing, Mr. I'm sorry. Um, opponent?
Thank you for your time tonight. Um, I know these are tough issues that come before this board. When I go in a court or go into a hearing, I always like to use my opponent's evidence against them. Their TIA for three hundred and four units calculates out the two thousand three hundred and six daily trips, and that's using their ITE two-twenty code versus the two-fifteen code, which would have even more trips going on there. One hundred and thirty-one peak AM trips dumping on the Market Street with three hundred and four units going in there. One hundred and seventy peak afternoon trips dumping on the Market Street, Market Street if this is allowed. Mr. Shipman rhetorically says, how can my clients throw rocks at this development? Because they are doing it four-point-two multiples over density than what's been allowed for fifty years. That's the rock. Not seventy-two units, three hundred and four units. That's why we're throwing rocks, because that fact in and of itself smacks of being harmonious to this established neighborhood. Let's talk about the easement of Bray's Drive. That easement that Mr. Shipman references was given to a parcel that was zoned R-15 for thirty acres for single-family homes. That easement wasn't given for three hundred and four units traversing public roads that are privately maintained by the Porter's Point neighborhood. What do you think is going to happen to that road if it were to be open for three hundred and four units? The maintenance is going to be astronomical. And what he's telling you without telling you about Amberly Shores is what all the developers are doing now. You deny our request, county, and we're just gonna go to the city and we're gonna nuke the site. But that doesn't mean that you should allow it tonight and turn your back on the folks that are here opposing this development. If the city doesn't want to stand up for them, then there's a way to get rid of the city officials that are gonna keep rubber-stamping this stuff and making multifamily everywhere in this, in this county. Enough is enough. This application, I have one thing to add. He talks about the archi- architects are in the business of designing things and designing them well, which means you've got to make sure they've got adequate ingress and egress and they're safe for people to use and pedestrians and bicyclists. And that's what Mr. Olds tells you with all of his experience as an architect, the deficiencies of this, this plan that's been designed before you tonight and the increase, the significant increase in the, in the safety risk for pedestrians and vehicular, uh, uh, trust, uh, users. Mr. Barrett, can you come up here for just a minute? Mr. Barrett, I know your resume is extensive and it's attached to your affidavit. Can you just give an overview of your experience to the board, uh, in the safety field?
My experience in safety field's been thirty years, ranging from everything from warehouse distribution, transportation, warehousing, general safety, flow plans of facilities, sites and roads. That is a general overview of what I've handled. So I have looked at traffic patterns. I've had a look at the merging and egress of trucks, semis, trailers, fully loaded, often with heavy loads like ducted iron pipe and other fittings when I was in underground waterworks. So I understand that when we talk about the amount of traffic flow, what it means we put on five more cars or ten more cars in a five-minute window or a hundred more cars or in the case of the Sheets where they, where the other side wishes to convince you, well, it's a greater flow, it's two different roads. You have to consider the size of the roads, the egress and the other, um, configurations. The mere fact that they're asking us to make U-turns or they're asking these new residents in this new community to make a U-turn, they'll have to cut across all traffic lanes in order to make that fast U-turn that they're putting in. U-turns are not safe, even when we expect them. People tend to jump the gun when they're turning right and do not allot time for you, people to make their U-turns. It's very commonplace now on Market Street, something I see on a daily basis and something that I did pick up when I was doing a study for this hearing.
Mr. Barrett, in preparing your affidavit, did you do your own, uh, vehicular density calculations that are also attached to your affidavit?
Yes, sir, I did.
Will you just generally tell the board what those findings show?
Generally, we found high levels of traffic when you normally would expect it, Monday through Friday, from the seven-thirty, seven-forty-five till almost nine AM of time, and then four-thirty to almost six-thirty at night, which would be your EM, your PM traffic. Additionally, we have, we looked at weekends, so you would have more midday traffic, late morning to early afternoon, all of which is consistent with what you'd expect. Additionally, when we were counting them, one of the things that was not taken into consideration were the number of vehicles that were seen taking a U-turn specifically at the, I believe it's Haynes, which is where the Walmart is, to come back north on Market Street. And there were significant number of vehicles that turned north in order to end up in our count.
And in your experience of thirty years and evaluating the safety of a variety of things, in your opinion, reviewing this application, do you believe that this application, if approved with the three hundred and four units and the increased vehicular density that's going to come from it, will it pose a significant material endangerment of the public's health and safety, sir?
Without question.
And did you review Mr. Olds's affidavit, uh, from his architectural perspective, as well as the affidavits of Mr. Rose, um, and I'm forgetting someone.
Mr. Bug.
Mr. Bug, but Mr. Rose and Mr. Olds, uh, and do you concur with their conclusions that the design of this, uh, proposed development, if approved and if built, would pose a material and significant public health and safety concern?
Absolutely. I looked at both of their, their affidavits and then looking and reviewing their affidavits. I did agree with what they found and their general findings, which is commensurate with what I have found with other architects and other planners in setting up different projects and building renovations.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. So with that, board, I respectfully request that you deny these applications tonight. They do not meet two requirements at a minimum that you must find for granting an SUP. They materially endanger and increase the s- to significance, uh, the health and safety of the public, uh, and also that this development is not harmonious with the surrounding neighborhoods in the area within which it is being located. And do not be, uh, confused when you look at the zoning map. The zoning map doesn't lie. There is one multifamily abutting Market Street, and that's because the developer went around your authority to the city. And if it weren't for that, there wouldn't be any multifamily on it. I ask you to deny them. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just by what your script says, um, if the board has questions of anybody who's opposed to it.
I, that's going to draw out additional evidence. I just recommend that you technically keep the hearing open and not close it, if, if there's any questions of this board of anybody who testified tonight. And I note that's contrary to what your script says, but it's my recommendation.
All right. So, anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
I do have questions. Um, there was a reference made to the road that goes out from the one parcel onto Market Street. Is it a parking lot or is it a road? I don't know who wants to answer that question, maybe Gary. So the B-two lot, that's the first one that fronts Market Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Looking at the map, it looks like that whole area back there feeds into a parking lot. It doesn't look like a road, so I'm curious, is it a road or is it not a road?
Wait a minute. From the B-two into the R-15?
No. From the R-15 going towards Market Street through the B-two.
Yeah, there's a road there, yes.
Is it a road? So it goes out, curves around the building, and then it goes onto Market Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I do have a second question. Maybe you can answer this. How many parking spaces are in that R-15 proposed? Like, how many, how many cars are you preparing to approve for that?
I'll let Allison answer that question. Mr. Walker?
There's a minimum required of, uh, four hundred and seventy-some spaces back there. It's two, uh, parking spaces per unit. What we have drawn on the plan is in excess of a hundred more than that, anticipating visitor parking. But everything that we've promised in the plan is the minimum, above the minimum, uh, amount, because there may be some design changes, uh, for grading or some such.
So what's the high side?
The high side would be five-seventy-two.
Five-seventy-two, okay. Um, let me see. This might be for, are we allowed to ask staff questions or not, Jordan? Okay.
Ms. Walker, one additional point. The parking spaces that she points out is in addition to the garages that will also be present, correct?
Includes garages.
Includes garage, okay.
Included, okay.
Yes.
So this might be a staff question. Um, did we looked at Pajers Creek and the potential effects of a dense development like this on the creek itself? Have we looked at any?
From a drainage standpoint?
Drainage and/or environmental standpoint. I mean, I don't, I, I'm obviously don't know the answers, so I'm just asking, I know Pajers Creek is what it abuts up to, I believe. Is that true?
I'll defer to our county engineer.
Yes, it, it abuts a tributary of Pajers Creek. And I believe they, uh, it's been alluded to this evening, um, the pre and post requirement, so they cannot exceed what is leaving the site today, um, with the new development. So that's what those ponds are designed to do, is control that flow rate into the creek itself.
So stormwater pond is what you're referring to, not the natural pond that's at the back?
Yes, the natural pond is there today. Yeah, it's not.
And that, and that, and it's, so I know, I, I don't know about what, what watersheds actually do necessarily, but like, if it's a natural pond there, does it, it, it's a natural part of the whole system, right? So anything that goes into it is going to eventually drain into Pajers Creek or?
So, the nature of the concerns that we've had in that area is actually with that pond not having anywhere for it to go except into the backyards of, uh, I believe it's Lantana, um, up there. And so, that requirement of the swale was asked for to give, uh, some relief for those existing properties up on Lantana.
And I guess I have one more question, not for you, though. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Um, the Bray's Drive, is it a privately owned road? Is it the HOA at Porter's Point that owns that?
It was originally intended to be dedicated. It was not, according to the maps, it was really originally intended to be dedicated, but because it was not built to NCDOT specifications, it has not been accepted as such, so...
So essentially, the HOA owns that road right now and it pays for the maintenance on that road?
Subject to the easement, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, I don't know, Gary or staff here. I'd like to talk about the WMPO's, uh, letter that was submitted. Who would be the, uh, person to ask?
If we could get a little clarification about the question you're asking about the WMPO's letter, we would either defer to the representative for the WMPO, or if it's about the traffic study that was done, the applicants do have someone.
It's the letter itself. It's actually a, a pretty base question here. It's the letter itself. It's actually a pretty base question here. Maybe you can answer it, Robert, or, excuse me, someone? Yes. Could you give us your name?
Caitlin Serso, Transportation Planning Engineer at the WMPO.
Thank you, Caitlin, for being here. The date on the letter is December the 4th, 2024, but it's, in the letter itself, it says the information is based on the TIA by Davenport provided on November 18th of 2024. Is that correct?
Yes, so the TIA was submitted previously, I believe, 2022, but this was in reference to the technical memorandum that they provided.
So did anything change between November 18th, 2024, when this was submitted, to this date?
Not that I'm aware of, other than I believe that, as they had mentioned, they intend to leave Brae's Drive as an emergency access gate. But they had studied both intersection or options, and the improvements were the same for both.
And we also went to a SUP as well. Am I correct? Robert, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The initial application was a rezoning, and then they resubmitted as these special use permits, yes, sir.
There's a short paragraph near the end on the second page of WMPO that says that if there's been any change in the land use, which the SUP, in my mind, would be, that the approval of this would become null and void. So I guess it's a process question. I just, you know, want to know, is the information in the WMPO letter still valid based on the changes in the land use request, meaning shifting to an SUP?
Yes, it would be. I know it was discussed as part of the, our general TIA review process back when we reviewed the technical memorandum last year in December, as well as, I believe, there was additional discussion when they elected to exercise the option to gate Brae's Drive. And I think that was in May or June of this year, so it was discussed again, and no changes. The WMPO and NCDOT, and I believe county staff, all agreed that nothing needed to be changed in the actual approval letter.
I see. And Robert, do you agree with that assessment from our staff point of view?
Yes, sir. At the time when the application, not application, I'm sorry, when the WMPO and the TIA was being reviewed, yes, sir.
You saw no difference or substantial difference that would change the WMPO's assessment?
It was based on unit count and staff's assessment.
Thank you.
One thing I was, I'm sorry. One thing I was interested in, Mr. Carroll, when you were talking about the police, nurses, and teachers being able to afford something, would they be able to afford that?
Well, we hope so. I mean, it's going to be a, a high-quality development, but our goal would be that it is some workforce housing there. We've not staked ourselves out on any, but affordable housing is something that's near and dear to me. It's, you know, something that we face in every community we, we work in. But you have my word, we would try to, we would try to address some there. And we typically have courteous off, courtesy officers where we give discounts to anyways in most of our communities. And so, yeah, that's something that we would try to, try to address.
People get confused when we talk about affordable housing, because it's not just for a policeman or a nurse. It's for somebody old, it's somebody that doesn't have a house. It covers, you know, the whole scale, everybody.
Agreed.
So, let me ask you this. Was there, at any point, was there a chance that y'all could get a stoplight right there on Market Street?
Where, sir?
Where all them cars gonna come out? I know they're expensive, but, I mean, that's a lot of cars coming out there.
Yeah, they're, the, John Davenport. No, NCDOT would not allow a full access. They, they, they wanted a U-turn. They, they have specific spacing along Market Street where they have full, we'd love to have full access. I mean, if they gave it to us, we'd, I mean, traffic signal is going to cost what it's going to cost. We just have to put it on the southbound side and not all the way across, but that's the best we can get out of them. We ask them.
I, I would just, pulling out of there, trying to get over two or three lanes anytime is scary. It's like a ride at Disney World riding down Market Street. So, no, I, I didn't say that, but I just, I just know, you know, it's not safe.
Understood. That's the way they designed that corridor, so we're just complying with what they.
The world overthinking when they did it.
We're just complying with what they ask us to do. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Robb, can I make one for a comment?
Absolutely.
One of the things that we had indicated is if this Board desires Option A of the approved TIA, and that is a full use of Brae's Drive, we will agree to that condition. We proposed an emergency access only in response to the concerns from those in Porter's Point that no traffic from this development use Brae's Drive. That's why we posed that, and that was approved. But if the issue is a concern about more traffic being able to exit this site, we would approve to, we would agree to a condition for Option A. The Porter's Point residents aren't pleased about that, I'm sure, but a full access or full use of Brae's Drive would be permitted. Yeah, exit only, not in people coming down Porter's Neck and going down Brae's Drive, but exit only for those exiting the project onto Brae's Drive. That was what was approved in the TIA as Option A.
Mr. Shipman, I hope that you can talk with me a little bit about this case that Mr. Richardson handed up, Peter Selly v. Boone Board of Adjustment. In your mind, how does this matter differentiate itself from the fact pattern in that case?
Because we've had 35 years more of opinions from the Court of Appeals since 1989, Mr. Scalise, that have made it abundantly clear that the same kind of generalized concerns from non-experts, which was given in that 1989, 1989 case, the Institute of Government has made clear as late as 2025. The Court of Appeals made clear in 2021 in a case involving a special use permit which this Board denied. So I would just say the response is 35 years of appellate history in North Carolina that deals with the, the, the fact that material incompetent evidence is not the kinds of generalized statements made in that particular case. The conclusion was made in that case that that generalized testimony rebutted the prima facie showing made by the petitioner. But, Mr. Scalise, I would suggest to you today, that is not the conclusion that the Court of Appeals would reach today, given what the Institute of Government has said and what 35 years of subsequent opinions have been given.
But even with that generalized reference to the Board and the case law, I guess that necessarily hinges on your suggestion, contention that there has been no expert witness testimony tendered by the opposition tonight. Because it seems to me like they believe that they have tendered some expert witness testimony. I understand that you have some, I assume that you have some disagreement about the sufficiency of that, but.
I do.
So it is your position, then, that they have not tendered expert witness testimony tonight?
True, but our prima facie showing, yes, sir. That's how, that's my position.
Is there a scenario in which, I feel like part of what I'm struggling with here, right from the outset, I feel like you're suggesting to this Board that we don't have a choice, that we have to do what it is that you're telling us tonight. Is, is that, in fact, your legal contention?
I don't know how you possibly, Mr. Scalise, could have assumed that from the words that came out of my mouth. Because I didn't say that.
Okay.
I specifically addressed what the options were, which included, you deny it. But when a material, when material competent evidence has been presented and the applicant makes out a prima facie case, you can only deny it if material competent evidence is presented to rebut it. So my position is that we presented material competent evidence, we made out a prima facie case, we're prima facie entitled to the issuance of the SUP, and yes, sir, I do not believe that there was material competent evidence to rebut the expert testimony that we provided.
But we're ultimately the trier of fact in this situation, and we get to determine whether or not we think those things are, in fact, sufficient competent evidence.
I disagree with that, sir.
You do?
Yes.
Why?
Because that's a conclusion of law that will ultimately be decided by a court as to whether or not this evidence is material incompetent. You don't get to make that, you can make that decision tonight, but you are not the ultimate decision-maker about that.
Folks, I do think that it's appropriate to please keep the audience noise to a minimum while we're having this dialogue, respectfully to Mr. Shipman. Mr. Richardson, do you want to respond to any of that?
So his answer to your question about the law that I gave was a bunch of smokescreen. It's good law. Like, if you're in front of a judge, he has no law to rebut it. It, it has not changed. In fact, it can, you can have lay witnesses that are substantial, material, incompetent to give testimony in opposition to a special use permit based upon their own firsthand observations. And, and for instance, since he says my case is too old, there's the Hopkins v. Nash County case from 2002. Perhaps that's early enough for him, more recent, where the residents were opposed to a stump dump being put in an inertia landfill next to their single-family residential homes. And they testified about, they being the residents, not experts, testified about there being dust, noise, 30 to 40 trucks per day going in and out of the proposed site, the additional traffic and noise and dust directly into a residential area. And the Court of Appeals said that substantial material incompetent evidence, that we're going to uphold the decision to deny the special use permit for lack of being in harmony. Happy to hand it out. May I approach?
Please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll just add, probably the state's leading guru on all things land use and zoning is David Lawrence. And he's got countless blogs and posts and treatises that he's issued. He's got an article, "Planning and Development Regulation: SUP Application and Neighborhood Harmony Standard", David Owens, from his 2023 fourth edition of Land Use Law of North Carolina. And he highlights Hopkins v. Nash County and the Peters Silly versus Boone Board of Adjustment as just two examples of how harmony is pre-legislatively determined. I mean, the special use permit is pre-legislatively determined that it might be harmonious in that area. But of course, you've got to have a hearing like this to determine whether or not the applicant's proposal actually is harmonious. And they might put on a prima facie case, but that doesn't end it, because then you get to hear from the opponents. And we put forward affidavits of an architect, a safety, a, a traffic engineer, and another guy with countless land use and zoning planning and all of his experience for municipalities throughout the state of North Carolina, as to how this is both not harmonious and poses a substantial increase of the public's, of the risk to the public's health and safety. And for those reasons, again, I would reiterate, hopefully I've answered your question, Mr. Scalise. I would, I would ask this Board to deny the applications.
Oh, thank you, sir, and I do appreciate you handing up this case. There's a portion on page three that I find notable. The quote is, "Substantial evidence must be more than a scintilla or a permissible inference." Would you kindly define what the word scintilla means for those who may not know?
Scintilla is, it has, it has to be more than a little bit. It, I mean, you, you, we go and you use that term of art all the time, but a scintilla is usually, I go in the court and I say, they don't have a scintilla of evidence, Judge, to support their position on this aspect. So you've got to have just a nugget of evidence as a scintilla. Beyond that, though, that's what it's saying. It's got to be beyond a mere scintilla.
Well, the next line, I think, is telling and helps to further define it. Substantial evidence is that which a reasonable mind might accept as adequate to support a conclusion. So it seems to me whether or not we are able to determine the outcome of this case will ultimately hinge on whether or not we are considered to have reasonable minds, and the evidence that has been provided one way or another has been adequate enough for us to reach the decision that we ultimately reach in this matter. I think that that's instructive, and I appreciate you handing up this case.
Yes, sir. Any questions for me?
Not, not for you. I do have, not for you. I have one more for maybe staff, maybe Mr. Shipman, his folks. I'm looking at one of the conditions, and it includes an I-1 zoning that is not part of it, but it is, it is needed to, in order to, let's see. Site shall not be valid without the use of the land zoned I-1 for vehicular, pedestrian, utility, infrastructure connectivity. I have not heard anything about this. I mean, it's in here somewhere about the I-1, but I would love an explanation about what that means. And where is this property, and is it owned by someone else?
Yes, I don't know if we can go back to the site plan. That may show us. But it is a small sliver of land. It's about 1,000 square feet that is currently zoned as industrial. And it is the connection piece between the B2 and the R15 portions of land. It does not require a rezoning or a special use for the connection road to be installed there. So therefore, not part of our, our case, or cases this evening.
So that's owned by someone else, but they're giving it to?
It's under contract by our client.
Okay. Thank you.
Gary, I had a question for you, Mr. Shipman, again. In your presentation, which went pretty quickly, and we appreciate that, and you tried to cram in a lot, a lot of information, on the section on schools, I believe, you referred a lot of the information to the Cropper Report
Yes, sir.
that appeared to be dated in 2010.
2024, January 2024.
Okay. I must have misread it. I was trying to, you know, take some notes as we were going along.
Yes, sir.
Where did the 2010, there is some information?
2010 is when the New Hanover County Board of Education adopted the neighborhood schools.
Right.
Concept.
I see. Very good. Thank you.
This is, this is not the easiest thing in the world. You know, we've got a gentleman over here that said that the traffic in the development that we're looking at is worse than the traffic at the Sheet Station, and we have a gentleman over here that says just the opposite, and they're both experts. So we're trying to sort all that out. That's why we're asking some of these questions. Is anybody?
Have we, have we closed in the public hearing, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. That's what I'm going to do right now. Public hearing is closed. Now, does anybody on up here got anything they want to talk about?
Mr. Chair, I'll take a stab at it. At least some comments at this point. The traffic issues, the lack of safe transportation, and the overcrowding and overcapacity of schools in that area are all issues I find very troubling about this. And all in the context of the amount of density. And all in the context of the amount of density is being asked for. And I greatly appreciated the conversation about harmony, and especially with this property being surrounded by three sides, by established neighborhoods of single-family, essentially R-15, not essentially, it is R-15, and then the one side towards Market Street having more commercial. My, my thoughts on this is that it, it is not in harmony with the location up there. I'll be interested in other commissioners' point of, points of view. And I just want to reiterate, the overcapacity of what we now, what we know is critical infrastructure in schools is also of great concern. The number of students that are being put in, I know they differ, the numbers we heard tonight differ from what our own staff has put in, put out there. And it's a lot of students, both to Porter's Neck and to Laney School, High School, that are both very much overcapacity at this point.
Commissioner, is that a motion?
Well, if, if we, if we're ready to go, you go to a motion, I'd be more than happy to make that.
I thought you were ready.
Oh, wait a minute, I think Stephanie.
No, no, I was saying, they're two separate.
Yeah, we've got to vote on them separately.
Right, so, I guess we, I don't know what order we should be going in.
Which one are we going to?
Well, the first one is S-24-04, and that's the front lot that's on Market Street.
That's the B-2?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Well, trying to separate these. I would find that, excuse, Mr. Chair, we're ready to move to a motion?
I wonder, and I'm sorry, but I, how are we going to sep, we've talked about this in Congress in combination throughout the entirety of this hearing, and it seems like one rises and falls with the other.
But you have to vote on them separately. I've been going through that all day.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about up here.
Unless the attorney wants to jump in there, our attorney.
I'd be happy to chime in. I do believe they're interconnected, there's conditions saying that if one fails, the other one fails. However, I do think that it'd be appropriate to vote on each specific special use before you.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Not a problem.
Commissioner Scalise, I agree with you completely. We've been asked to look at this in one on top of the other, and to hear testimony about both interchanging swiftly. So I agree with you, but if this is what our attorney is saying, I'd be more than happy to separate that, and so focusing on the B-2 area, I have motioned to deny the permit because the board finds that the use will materially endanger the public health or safety if located or proposed, and specifically the lack of safe transportation, enter, entrance and exit, and having to go through the, the B-2 section to go over to the R-15. So, without saying that, it's the, the transportation issues that I'm referring to. And that would be exit onto Market Street as well.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
A friendly amendment to your motion. I would recommend that rather than focusing solely on the material endangerment component, that you also make reference to the lack of harmony in the area in which it's located to include matters of noise, traffic congestion. As a friendly amendment, I would offer that to your motion.
I have no objection to that.
I'll second his amendment.
I was kind of holding that to the R-15, but I think if it works here, yes.
I'll second his amendment, or his amendment, if that's what we're doing it procedurally, okay.
Right, so adding what you added, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All oppose?
Commissioner, just a minute, Housekeeping can?
We assume that the board finds that the applicant did satisfy condition two and three, or is the board not going to address that?
Well, it's my understanding that all we have to do is say that one of, or more of these does not reach the threshold. I'm not prepared, as part of my motion, to make an assessment as to the second or the third proposition unless I'm required to do so.
Neither am I.
As a perfunctory matter, I guess, I'll say no, but I mean, I, I'm not prepared to speak to that. I think that it's enough for me to say no as to issues one and four.
Commissioner Scalise, that, that's fine, I, sorry, I turned my mic off. Certainly fine, Commissioner Scalise, I just note, if, if there's a challenge to this and the board, the court rules against this board, we may have to come back to consider what about two and three.
At which time, we will address it.
Right, right.
It's fine.
Okay, so, from what I understand, if one doesn't pass, the other one doesn't pass. Is that correct?
And to be helpful, I think the board can make the same motion that it just made for the first one for the second one, but I do recommend that we two votes.
We recommend that we do vote.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yes, I'll make a second motion, but I, I thought that if we did not find for, in this case, the B-2 section, that that, the matter stopped right there. Am I wrong in that?
Apparently, our attorney is suggesting that for thoroughness, we address the issue of the S-24-05, R-15 portion.
I'll make the same motion that I made for the B-2.
And is it the same reason?
Yeah, number, number one and number four, public health and safety and harmony. I find that the, the motion deny is a result of them not finding, for those findings, a fact. Number, in our book, it says A and D or one and four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now, we'll go to the speaker sign-up sheet. First person is Lennium Wiseman.
It's just a terrible place, it's just terrible. I can't imagine how people would get killed there, but they have to do something in that property, but it's got to be houses and stuff.
My son's birthday.
Ms. Wiseman, you have three minutes, okay?
Well, I'll do my best.
Well, I mean, it ends at three minutes.
I know, I feel like an afterthought, though, I have to tell you that. And, and looking at your mission statement, and you're talking about trying to have really good quality and service for the community, exceptional public services, through good governance to ensure a safe, healthy, secure, and thriving community for all, I would like to say that we're not doing that in Wilmington. We have a real problem with our hospital, Novant Regional Medical Center, and, you know, I've been around here for a while, I've lived in Wilmington for thirty-five years. I was recruited to Novant, or New Hanover at that time, to be head of quality of that hospital. So, I am really ingrained in quality and providing good care for patients. As a patient advocate, and with all the patients I see in my business that I have now, we're not doing that, we're not doing that at all. You know, I, I come with lots of experience, I've been a national healthcare consultant for thirty years, hospitals and hospital systems around the country call me to come and fix their hospitals. We're talking about places like Johns Hopkins, Cleveland Clinic, not just little bitty places, but I also have helped little bitty places. I have gone back to work at Novant a couple different times since then, where they brought me in to assess their home health program, and I did that. So, I feel bad for what's happening, happening in Wilmington. Recently, I was just diagnosed with Parkinson's about three years ago, and Parkinson's community are having a really hard time because we have no specialists in this town that deals with Parkinson's, or MS, or any of the complex neurological symptoms. I want to make a difference, and I'd like you to seriously, you know, consider that we have to make a difference because I've, you know, all my healthcare that I've had, I've had terminal colon cancer, colon cancer, obviously I didn't die, and I've had to go to Duke for most of my care. I had a knee revised at Cape Fear, and there, it got very infected. I was without a knee for about six months, and had to go to Duke, they wouldn't operate me on, on me for months and months because of the infection, and now they say, they put in a new knee finally, but they say now there's nothing else that can be done unless I get an amputation. That's not an option for me, to get an amputation. The concern I have is that when I went to the hospital to Cape Fear, my daughter handed me a bedpan. The bedpan was caked three inches deep.
Ma'am, your time's up, I'm so sorry.
Okay. Is that the kind of healthcare you want?
Robert John?
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. My name is Robert John, and I'm here today as a son who lost his mother because of the failures of Novant New Hanover Regional Medical Center. My mother, Jacqueline, was seventy-five years old when she walked into Novant with hope of healing, and she never came home. What happened inside that hospital is something no patient should ever have to endure. After major abdominal surgery, my mother was given inconsistent and often negligent care. One example of this is that her pain medication was stopped without warning, leaving her crying out in agony. I was with her throughout the night, begging medical staff for help, but the attending doctor never responded. I stood by helplessly as my mother writhed in pain for over four hours. Post-surgery, my mother remarked that none of the surgical team had examined her incision area. After a longer-than-average recovery time, I asked the surgical team for a CT scan. That CT scan that could have saved her life was not ordered. Days later, blood and stool poured from her abdominal wound as she tried to walk to the bathroom, but it was already too late. This resulted in a disastrous second surgery, which led to her stay in the ICU. My father and I pleaded for a plan of care, for clear communication, and even for a patient advocate. We were given phone numbers that didn't work, excuses instead of answers, and doctors who could not or would not coordinate as a team. Even decisions about palliative care were made without our family present, and my mother signed an end-of-life document after we were asked to leave the room. These are not just lapses in professionalism, they are failures of compassion, communication, and accountability. I'm asking you now, please do not let this happen to another family. Novant is, Novant is this community's lifeline. When its care fails, it is our mothers, fathers, and children who pay the price. We need strong oversight, we need real patient advocacy, care plans that involve families, and accountability for those who fail to act. My mother deserved better. Every patient in New Hanover County deserves better. Please use your power to make sure that Novant never allows another patient to suffer as my mother did. Thank you. And here is a picture of her. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gail Bordeaux, and I have been an RN for the last forty-one years. I have a master's degree in nursing from East Carolina University, and I'm nationally board-certified in two nursing specialties. I've worked in hospitals in North and South Carolina, long-term care facilities, hospice, public health, education, and I'm currently working in home care. The last two years, I've been a patient in Columbus, Brunswick, and New Hanover Hospital. I've had immediate family members in New Hanover and in Cape Fear, so I've seen these hospitals from a professional, personal, and a family perspective. When I first came to Wilmington, nurses had two choices. They could choose where they wanted to work at the two hospitals. The nurses were valued, and the hospitals offered incentives to hire the best nurses. Opportunities for additional schooling was offered, along with different types of shifts and other kinds of incentives to get nurses to want to work at their hospital. But that's all changed. Now nurses are just widgets in the system, and if they aren't Novant team players, they are likely to find themselves unemployed, which is then hard to find employment as Novant owns most of everything else in town. Now, I am free to speak, as I am not dependent on the hospital for my livelihood. What is quality care? Is it the room being clean, the call light answered promptly, the food hot, or the food cold when it's supposed to be hot or cold? And yes, that is all part of it, that's what the normal person sees. But what about the time and attention you get from their nursing staff and their expertise? Between UNCW and Cape Fear Community College, over two hundred new nurses graduate yearly, and New Hanover hires many of them. Yet, as of last week, there were over seventy-six postings for nursing on the website, and that did not count the nursing assistants who can make the same amount of money working as fast food as they can in healthcare. My experience tells me that nurses are not valued and supported. When they're unable to care for patients the way they should be, they face a moral dilemma, they burn out, and they leave the profession. Nurses want to give quality care, but when they do not have the mentorship to learn or the time to be with a patient, they're going to miss things. For example, many nurses care for up to eight patients. That is not the standard or the recommendation, but it's what happens at Novant. And in a twelve-hour time period, if you do the math, each patient only gets 1.5 hours of care. Now, during a typical shift, that nurse would have to do a complete physical assessment, take vital signs multiple times, give a bath, change the bed, get the patient out of bed to walk or sit in the chair, give medications multiple different times, change dressings, and if it's day shift, they have at least three meals they need to get in.
Ma'am, your time's up, ma'am. I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm going to continue because if you can talk to zoning for hours, I can finish here.
Well, we're going to turn the mic off.
When this happens, I'm still going to talk, when this happens, patients, subtle changes are not necessarily noticed, and these can lead to complications, a change in color, a slight elevation in temperature, or heart rate. These are complications that get missed, and what we find are these disastrous
These are complications that get missed, and what we find are these disastrous results. So, please consider looking at and seeing what we can do to get healthcare and nurses more valued here.
Jeannie, Jeannie Little, Lennon, I'm sorry. Ms. Lennon, I think there's a little clock right there that tells you when your three minutes is getting ready to end. Thank you.
Okay. As he said, I'm Jeannie Lennon. I'm a voter from precinct W-31. And your voters in this county are very upset by what's happening at our hospital. And as you know, most of you were not on this board when the decision was made to sell our hospital. The only person who is still on voted no. So, it's something that all of you really need to get involved with right now. And what I'm asking today as part of the Five Star Project is that you wield all the power you possibly can to get us back to an acceptable level in this community. Our voters and our residents need it. We need you to demand a plan of action from Novant that will correct their deficiencies. And I'm concerned not just about the individual people that are delaying healthcare and not going to the ER because they're scared of our ER, but also what it's doing to the sense of well-being for our entire community. A happy, healthy community has to feel safe and secure. People don't now. They are frightened of our hospital, and that's not a good look. I'm a former, a retired social worker and family therapist. And I hear from my friends and people in other organizations, everybody's scared. And it may not be fair, but in the public's eye, because you sold it, you need to fix it. So, I really encourage you to do that. The, the fear of not having exceptional medical care available goes all the way through a community, and it affects everything from crime rates to parenting. And the whole feeling of happiness and inclusion in our community. And another thing that concerns me is it affects our economic well-being. As people begin more and more to be aware of how dreadful things are at the moment, they're telling their friends, they're not encouraging them to move here, they're not encouraging them to come here and spend their money as a tourist. So, there's many impacts, and we don't want those kinds of comments about our beloved counties. So, please exercise everything you possibly can and consider the economy, the, the impact on people's well-being, and try to not just demand from them a plan, but follow up with them and make sure they do it. Because we need adequate staffing and safety measures that are actually implemented, not just talked about in TV ads. Thank you for sticking with us tonight and listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Martel?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I commend you on your endurance, your stamina. I will try and make this brief. When New Hanover Regional Medical Center was sold to Novant in 2021, the county commissioners did not own that hospital. That hospital belonged to the citizens of New Hanover County. In executing the, the sale, the county commissioners actually took on the duty of making sure that that contract was well-formed, well-thought-out, and that all the promises made in that contract were true. As it stands right now, there were specific elements in that contract, particularly that Novant would make all reasonable effort to bring the hospital up to the top ten percent nationwide in patient satisfaction and in patient quality. Those have not been met. It currently sits at fifty percentile in patient satisfaction and thirty percentile in quality. That's based on Medicare data. Over the past year and a half, I have heard from countless residents of this county. They are traumatized, they are frightened, and they know their hospital is not safe enough and not good enough. You received by email or on your desk a copy of a petition and a resolution. That petition has gained almost three thousand seven hundred signatures. They are not all from New Hanover County, because this is a community and a regional issue, but the vast majority are. I can supply you with a list of names if you choose, but that is not really the point. The point is that this is an important issue. The residents of this county feel very strongly about it. This issue will not go away until the quality at the hospital is brought up to a decent standard. We are asking you to use all your powers and whatever authority you have based on the contract to have Novant be accountable for the quality of their healthcare at their hospital. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Stephen McNelly?
Hi. Thank you for having me here. The one word I can define Novant, atrocity. They have committed so many atrocities, I can't even begin to tell you, but I wish I could fit them all in this three minutes, but I can't. One in being, my son died there in two thousand twenty-one of July. He was twenty years old. By the time the doctors figured out what was wrong with him, his heart already stopped. There were five of them in there trying to resuscitate him to no avail. I seen him die, my wife seen him die right in front of us. I suffer from PTSD from it to this day. All on account that Novant does not know what they're doing. I can give you a half a dozen other stories. It, it's just unbelievable. Just this past May, my wife had an abrasion done for a thud that she had a problem with for years. After the procedure, here's another good one. She was suffering from numbness on one side of her body. She discussed this with the nurse. No red flag went off in this nurse's brain to say, maybe there's something wrong. They sent my wife home. Two days later, she had two more strokes. She had them burn right after the procedure, and then two days later. I was there in February, real quick. I caught the flu from there. My wife did, gave it to me. I had a hundred and four point two fever. I was sixty-eight years old. You know what that could do to a sixty-eight-year-old? I don't have to explain that to anybody. I went there in the emergency room. They, they let me sit there in that ER for four and a half hours, that when the doctor came in, he gave me a script. I was out the door in five minutes. I felt like I was gonna hit the ground. If you were standing two feet next to me, you could feel the heat emanating off my body. When I asked that doctor, was he aware that I had such a high fever? You know what his answer was? Well, you have the flu, sir. That's the answer I got. If that's not an atrocity, I don't know what is. Something has to be done here with this hospital. The writing's on the wall. And I want to elaborate what that young lady just a little while ago said about these nurses have burnt out and everything. That, I doesn't hold more the truth than the way she said it. I'm gonna tell you. And the way to fix this, the only one thing I can come up with is, they have to get more qualified staff, because they lack a lot of it. And what was that all about? When they fired all of these nurses and staff because they didn't want to get the COVID shot? I'm sure you all remember that story. At the jeopardy of patients, they're gonna fire everybody just because they feel like it? If that's not an atrocity, I don't know what is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Denise Henning?
Hi, I'm Dr. Henning, and I am a professor at UNCW. On February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, my husband John was taken to New Hanover Regional Hospital Emergency Room. He had a terrible cough and had congestions. This had gone on for nearly a month, and we were consistently seeing our family physician, and was treated with medication, but it got worse. And we needed to take him to the emergency department. This was on Valentine's Day. When we got there, they didn't have a room. They put him behind closed screens in the lobby of the waiting room. He stayed there for nearly, till nearly three in the morning, and before they finally found him a bed in the emergency room, it was still forty-eight hours later that he was given a room and put on a floor. Once he was admitted, they started running tests, scans, blood work, and echocardiograms. They put him on medication, and it helped him breathe. But the emergency department was so overwhelmed, there were seventy-three patients that were waiting for beds, and some had been waiting for four days. It was the advocacy of Dr. Watson who pushed and said that this was urgent, and that John finally was moved to the heart floor. On the fifth floor, they treated him for pneumonia with IV antibiotics. And he did, he did start to improve, and within a few days, he was lapping around the halls. The goal was to get him to be able to lay flat long enough for him to have a heart catheterization, because they wanted to rule out congestive heart failure. By February twentieth, he was scheduled for the procedure. I kissed him goodbye, and he was taken down. Thinking that I'd see him in a couple hours, he asked me to go to the grocery store, so we had groceries for when he came home. I'm not very good at buying groceries. I got a call later, twenty, actually twenty minutes later, from Dr. Sunil Iyer, who told me that John's main artery had been dissected during the procedure, and that he was being moved to ICU. As I had left the hospital to go get those groceries, I rushed back to ICU. There was no one there to help me. And after letting them know by phone three times that I was there, I waited for an hour before I spotted a man in scrubs that was walking down, answering the phone, and he said, this is Dr. Iyer. I stopped him. I said, my name is Dr. Denise Henning. You called me about my husband. Please tell me what happened. I would like to see him. He took me back to ICU, warning me that John was on an air ventilator. In ICU, Dr. Iyer told me that he had accidentally dissected John's artery, and that he was going to, as he was going up into his artery before it branched to his heart. He said it never happened to him before. This was something I later found out was not true. After he was stabilized, they also didn't tell me that he had cardiac arrest for three times, and was, had to be revived three times. An ICU nurse tried to explain to me the machines, the ventilators, the pumps, the sedation, but still, there was no one to guide me through this process. No one to help my children and I to understand what happened. There was no advocate. And here's the heartbreaking truth. The only heart problem that John had was a forty percent blockage in a small vein in his heart. His heart was healthy, and it was strong. On March twenty-third,
Ma'am,
I had to make the most painful decision of my entire life. I had to turn off life support. The doctors told me that they were giving him so much medication to keep him going, that they feared his heart would rupture. This is my reality. This is my trauma. Long waits, preventable mistakes, a doctor who didn't care enough to apologize, no communication, and it cost the life of the man of my world. It cost the life of my children's father.
Thank you, ma'am. Sheila Wilson?
Hello, Commissioners.
Hello.
My name is Sheila Wilson Gaskin. I did, this is extemporaneous. I did not come with a speech repaired. I came to support my friend, Robert John. But my background is, I'm an RN. I've worked in Level One Trauma Centers, in the emergency departments. I've worked in every department of a hospital. I couldn't just passively sit by and let others talk about an issue that is really this important to this community. We have the tenth fastest-growing community in the whole US. We have a population, we are the second smallest county. We have a population of about two hundred and forty-eight thousand people. Our faith in our hospital has to be strong, but it is shaken. It is very shaken. I hear stories like this all the time. I did a survey just very casually on an app called Nextdoor a couple days ago, and I had close to a hundred replies. The question was, hello, I need some input from others on Nextdoor. I go to Duke for specialty care, because I don't feel we have the resources here and had some negative interactions at Novant. Are there many others in our community who also travel out of town for care? If so, is it because of lack of faith in our local system or any other reason? And I would say that we will all probably have to use that hospital emergency room at some point. I got a lot of replies, and one person had said they wouldn't have moved here if they knew about the hospital and the care. I had a personal experience with, I go to Duke every three months myself for specialty care. That is not an easy trip. We should not have to go to another hospital for a treatment. That's, you know, that's not right. We have a Level Two Trauma Center. It supports a lot of other areas around us. The population's gonna continue to grow. We have to have some faith in this hospital. I don't have much time, but a quick story in the emergency department here. I went with a friend. I looked around. The emergency department was filthy. There were people in the hallways. I could not leave him alone. I stayed there for two and a half days in the emergency room with him, because I did not feel that he should be left alone. And this is not something you want to have, happen to your loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Stephanie Gorzening? Did I say that wrong? Okay. Christine Mason?
Hi.
Hi there.
Christine. First off, my heart goes out to everyone that just came up here. This is hard to follow all of that. I just wanted to address some information that was delivered earlier during a hearing. Proper Consulting Study for Schools was referenced during the hearing, and there was some information spoken about that was incorrect. And just for you all moving forward as you work together with schools, I know there's a lot of conversations going on, just trying to make our schools better. I just wanted to make sure you had the right information. It was said that elementary schools are not over capacity, and that's just flat out wrong. I don't, you probably saw the red on the elementary sheet that was thrown up. Out of the twenty, twenty-five elementary schools on that list, by two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, sixteen schools are predicted to be over a hundred percent. There's seven schools from eighty-five to a hundred percent, and then there was only three under capacity that slated for two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight. The total for elementary was a hundred and three percent area-wide over capacity by, but right now, actually. Then it was said that high schools are not over capacity, that Ashley, Hoggard, or their fine, Laney's the one that's over. Hoggard is, I mean, New Hanover is under, but Ashley, Hoggard, and Laney are all over a hundred percent. When I called Laney this week to figure out how many kids they had enrolled, their building capacity was one thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven kids, and they're enrolling two thousand four hundred kids currently. So that's like the size of another elementary school. Just wanted to point that out. And then the study ends at two thousand twenty-three, thirty-three, uh, two thousand thirty-two, thirty-three, sorry. Elementary at a hundred and four percent, middle at a hundred percent, high at a hundred and seven percent. So the trajectory is up. We, we keep hearing about a nominal decline of point zero five per unit, residential unit. That is a very, very small decline. The trajectory is up for this study that you all have been presented with, and the Board of Education has. And then lastly, I'm not sure how much time we have. The study suggested, made suggestions of what can be done about it. Redistricting was not an option. It was said that it was too far gone. The whole county's over capacity. And the most important point is that the study was done only factoring in what is currently here. It did not account for future growth. And that's also at the end of the study, too. So when you see those numbers and you see the red, that's only for what's here. That has no predictive of, you know, we keep hearing all these data points about how fast we're growing. That does not account for that at all. So, I appreciate everything you all are doing for the schools. I know there's a lot of movement, a lot of important conversation. I know there's a lot of movement, a lot of important conversations going on. I just wanted to make sure that, when I heard that earlier, it really kind of stuck me, and I wanted to just get up here and make sure everyone had the right info.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can assure you that this young lady right next to me, and I know they were not telling the truth about that tonight, when Cropp, who, I couldn't believe they bought that up here, when we were a district, when I was on the board, they had forty people living on Mason Maraling. So it was, we know, we know. All right. Anything, Mr. County Manager? And Mr. Attorney, do you have anything? This meeting is adjourned.